Would you please stand and join with me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with love and justice for all.
So Diego, what grade are you in?
I am in the fifth grade.
And Latanya is Diego's mom. One of the reasons I asked Diego to come this evening is because he's had some difficulties in life, but he didn't allow them to impair his ability to be successful. And Diego is a published poet, and so he's published a couple of his poems, talking about some of his disabilities and what it's like to move past them. And so I'm extremely proud of Diego. So thank you so very much for being here this evening, Diego.
You're welcome.
And I want to highlight Austin Greiner to talk about mentoring program, Mentoring Program, Mentoring Matters. So, Austin, if you could come up. And Kevin, if you want to come up. Kevin is Diego's mentor. And so not only has Diego made some wonderful friends, he's transformed people's lives. And so, Austin, if you could speak for a moment, as well as Kevin, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you Mayor Bellamy and council members. My name is Austin Greiner. I'm the Executive Director of Mentoring Matters. It's true that Diego has faced some issues in his life, and he doesn't have a father in his life. But he does have a mentor who's willing to fill that gap for him. Fatherlessness is an epidemic in the United States. Twenty-four million kids, one out of every three, live in a fatherless home. Fatherlessness plays a part in every social ill in our community and our country. The numbers are simply staggering. Sixty-three percent of all teen suicides come from homes with an absent father. Ninety percent of all runaways are fatherless. Eighty-five percent of men in prison do not have an, or did not have, an active father. Seventy-one percent of high school dropouts live in father-absent homes. Children without an active father are four times more likely to live in poverty. Girls without an active father are fifty-three percent more likely to marry as a teenager, seven times more likely to get pregnant as a teenager, and ninety-two percent of them will experience divorce. We believe that the most effective way to teach a new behavior and correct an old behavior is the model of positive behavior. Because of this belief, Mentoring Matters has a specific and unique focus. We recruit men to stand in the gap that other men have left. We equip men to mentor to the fatherless and support them through partnerships with youth service organizations in their journey to model fatherhood. We seek to build a community of trained mentors to infuse our culture with hope and teach the next generation. Our ultimate goal is to protect and defend our youth by reinstating a strong father culture in our country.
Kevin, would you like to talk a little bit about Diego?
Well, Diego's an awesome kid. You know, you mentioned that he's got disability. He is, despite that, he's on grade level at Coons Middle School. He's an amazing kid. He entered his poem in a poetry contest in DC this past summer and came in second place in the United States.
Wow.
In the poetry section. And so he's just an amazing kid. And Mentoring Matters has trained over a hundred men now in Asheville to mentor fatherless boys. And so we just, we really appreciate your support in helping us to get what we're doing out there. It's a tremendous issue, the fatherless crisis in America right now, so.
Thank you so very much both of you. And I just want to say to Latanya, thank you so very much for what you're doing for Diego and the opportunities that you're affording him. He's heard from the White House and the person of the First Lady, and she's read his poems, and so it's so exciting to see him. And so Diego, I want you to continue to be strong and keep leading this community when we talk about being able to overcome issues in life. So thank you for your leadership. Council, we have a wonderful group of young men who are outside, who can't get in here. But I want to recognize them before we go too far in the meeting, before we do the invocation. But it's, we're talking about great young boys, and so this is a group of young boys. Can we open that door, officer, and let the Boy Scouts troop 91 come in? So everyone can at least see them wave. They're here to do their project, and they're willing to sit in the hall. They're downstairs? Did they go downstairs? Aw, man. If we get them up here, I'll stop the meeting so we can recognize them. They're here to six-thirty, they want to earn a badge. And so they chose to come to City Council to earn one of their merit badges. And so anybody who wants to sit in here, they deserve to be recognized. Who are younger, not you all, but you all are here for specific reasons. You all want to speak to us tonight. So no insults, don't tweet me later, or tweet about this later, give me a hard time. I appreciate you all being here as well. While they're coming upstairs, we'll call on Councilman Pelley to give the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the items on the agenda tonight is another project that has the potential to transform our riverfront. And the French Broad River, as it winds through Asheville, has a rich history here. And as I thought about this project, I thought about a description I had read of the French Broad River written nearly a hundred years ago by Foster Somley, included in his book about the history of Buncombe County, published in 1930. Those of you who may not know, you probably do know, many do, that he was a collector and historian and wrote a fairly extensive history of early Buncombe County, including, as I say, a description of the French Broad River, which to me has an almost poetry-like quality to it that I'd like to read to you now. "The French Broad Gorge. Before the advent near its banks of factories and cities, the French Broad was one of the most beautiful rivers in the world. Its famous gorge presented to the beholders a variety of scenic panorama and wild grandeur rarely equaled and nowhere excelled. The constant winding of the river, the rugged character of its bed, the brilliant sparkle of its pure waters, the speed with which these waters rush down the steep proclivities, the density and verdancy of its forest, and the massive bodies and sublime altitudes of its rocks and bluffs and cliffs, and bordering ridges and mighty mountain peaks imparted to the landscape at every point a character of romance with vivid suggestions of magic production and giant inhabitants and stupendous castles and fortifications and prison from which escape into the outer world could never be affected. For the wonderful exhibitions of nature's limitless power in mighty and artistic architecture, this gorge enjoyed a wide reputation as a home of beauty and grandeur and moving sublimity, and as such was frequented by lovers of nature's work from many and distant lands who reveled in the fascination of its awe-inspiring majesty and transcendent glories. There, nature reigned supreme." Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, at this time, council, we have three proclamations. And we are going to allow council members to read each of those proclamations. The first one is October 24th, 2013, being declared as Food Day. Ms. McSwain and Ms. Lewis have received the proclamation from Councilman Smith. All right, all right, Councilman Smith, before you read the proclamation, if we could have troop 91 come in. And as you come in, if you just state your name in the record, we're going to put you on the spot. We're going to let you say your name into the official record.
My name is Becker Andry.
And what grade are you in?
I'm in eighth grade.
All right, if you want to stand here.
My name is Liam Gilbert.
You don't want to say what grade you're in.
Sixth grade.
Thank you.
My name is Ben Chambers, and I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Jonathan Prock, and I'm in eighth grade.
My name's Ethan Davis, and I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Ben Wilson, and I'm a freshman.
My name is Brian Lee, and I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Ian Sprouse, and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Patrick Sullivan, I'm in sixth grade.
Hey, I'm Blake, I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Henry Hitchcock, and I'm in sixth grade.
My name is William David, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Roz Andrew, I'm in sixth grade.
Carrie Smith, and I'm in sixth.
My name is Jack Karaginos, and I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Andy Vier, I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Davis Robertson, I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Jordan Jordan, and I'm in seventh grade.
Can we give them a hand, please? Guys, I just want to say thank you all for choosing to earn a merit badge by coming to City Council meeting. It's important for us to have young people who really care about civic engagement and for you all to have a commitment to be here for an hour and a half to learn about civics in real life. It's an honor to me. So I just want to personally thank you all for coming upstairs and coming to our meeting. But I really appreciate you all choosing Asheville City Council's meeting to hear about what's happening in your local community. And so we wish you all the best, and so we hope you earn your badges as a result of participating tonight. Counsel, anything else? If not, unfortunately, we're going to have to send you back downstairs because it's packed in here, but we just want to acknowledge you. And just so you know, you're all a part of the city of Asheville's history. Ms. Brilson's going to make sure your names are in the records. So I think that's pretty awesome. All right, thank you, guys. So if you all will go back through that door, they'll let you all back downstairs. Again, thank you all so very much for being here this evening. So as the guys are going back downstairs, we're going to declare October 24th, 2013 as Food Day. And as one of the original individuals who helped get our food policy council in place, Councilman Smith is going to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you Karen McSwain and Ulufemi Lewis for being here to receive this proclamation today. I'm going to read this and then ask if y'all would like to say a few words about what's going on. Whereas, the health and well-being of our citizens is a primary concern for the city of Asheville. And whereas reducing obesity and diet-related diseases by promoting safe and healthful diets is one way of improving citizens' overall health. And whereas supporting sustainable family farms and local agriculture benefits the local economy. And whereas the Asheville Buncombe Food Policy Council is a forum for discussing food issues, influencing policy, and supporting programs that address local food needs. And whereas the Asheville Buncombe Food Policy Council consists of six clusters, which include access, asset mapping, food security, health and education, land use, and legislation. And whereas expanding access to food and ending hunger is of critical importance for people who live where healthful food is difficult to obtain. And whereas one way to combat rising obesity rates among children is to reduce junk food marketing aimed at children and to educate children about the marketing efforts that they will make informed choices about healthful eating. Now therefore, Terry Bellamy, Mayor of the city of Asheville, does hereby proclaim October 24th, 2013, as Food Day in the city of Asheville, and encourage all citizens to recognize and celebrate with appropriate activities. Who's going to receive this?
Peace and blessings to the Asheville City Council. Again, my name is Ulufemi Lewis. Excuse me for being nervous, but this is pretty big for the community here. I would like to thank you all for providing us this opportunity to accept this. And I would also like to say that there are things happening in our community to where we are addressing the food access issue. And I would like to speak on behalf of the Ujima Freedom Market, which is a cooperative business that will be a mobile market that goes around to various communities, including low-income communities. And our mission statement is to feed and nourish the whole community through access to healthy, fresh foods. We aim to promote social, economic, environmental, and food justice by serving as a model for self-sufficiency while educating and inspiring healthy relationships with the food in order to strengthen the quality of life and health and well-being of the community. I am a resident, ten-year resident of the Hillcrest community. And I've seen these very issues come up with food access in our community and how we need them. And extensive sent-back complaining, I felt like it should be, there's an opportunity to make something happen and to give access to those residents in need for that. And I would just like to ask that you all continue to support us if you hear about us, Facebook us, and support us in our movement and doing this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. I'd like to take a moment just to thank you all for your great commitment to building a strong local food economy in Asheville. It is fantastic to live in a community where our leaders support our food providers. But unfortunately, that's not the case always on the federal level. So I just want to take a moment to let everybody know about what's going on with the Food and Drug Administration right now. They have proposed regulations for farms and food businesses under the Food Safety Modernization Act, affectionately or not so affectionately referred to as FISMA, that will force many of our local farmers and food entrepreneurs out of business. While we have a great partnership here in Asheville with our local leaders, we need to insist that the FDA become a partner to our farmers and our entrepreneurs as well instead of enacting policies that will force them out of business. There are a number of issues with the proposed rules that are problematic for farmers and food processors. We need to tell the FDA that they need to go back to the drawing board and rewrite the on-farm produce standards and the preventative controls for food facilities and issue rules that are based on real science. I encourage all of you here and in the room to Google FISMA or visit the Carolina Farm Stewardship Association's website to find more information about how these rules are going to impact our growers and our community. And then take a moment to comment about what that means to you and what you think that means to our community. Especially, council members, you have the vote and the voice of your community. And I think that your voice would go a long way in impacting the FDA to change their direction and create food safety standards that increase safety in our food system without putting our farmers and food entrepreneurs out of business. The deadline to make comments is coming up pretty quickly, it's November 15th. So please, anybody, if you have a few moments to spare, Google FISMA and take a look at it and see if, see how that's going to impact you. I'm not sure if I'm allowed to hand you any information.
Counsel.
Fantastic. I'll give you some information. But once again, I do really want to thank you all for your commitment to local food in the community.
Thank you. All right, thank you so very much. The next proclamation is recognizing November 2013 as Crime Stoppers Month. Chief Anderson will receive the proclamation presented by Councilman Pelley.
Mayor, thirty-five years ago, a volunteer group came together and thirty years ago became instituted as a formal nonprofit, and that is Crime Stoppers here. And in November, we'd like to recognize the thirtieth anniversary of the creation, of formal creation of Crime Stoppers here. Carl Catterjohn is the chairman of Crime Stoppers. And Chief, thank you. And the members of Crime Stoppers, could you raise your hand and let us know you're here too? Thank you all for coming today. We have a proclamation to that effect? Whereas Asheville-Buncombe Crime Stoppers, a joint collaboration of the city of Asheville and Buncombe County, was established in 1983 and held its first meeting in November of that year. And whereas November 2013 will be the thirtieth anniversary of Asheville-Buncombe Crime Stoppers. And whereas since its inception, Asheville-Buncombe Crime Stoppers has received thousands of tips leading to the apprehension of individuals wanted by law enforcement, the identification and arrest of perpetrators of criminal acts, the recovery of stolen property, and the seizure of unlawful drugs within the city of Asheville and Buncombe County. And whereas the success of Asheville-Buncombe Crime Stoppers can be attributed to the continued support of the Asheville Police Department and the Buncombe County Sheriff's Office, along with local businesses, community organizations, and concerned citizens. And whereas the city of Asheville is committed to maintaining a safe community and encouraging its citizens to watch out for each other and report crime to the appropriate authorities. Now therefore, Terry Bellamy, Mayor of the city of Asheville, do hereby proclaim November 2013 as Crime Stoppers Month in the city of Asheville. And we extend our sincere thanks to everyone who has made Asheville-Buncombe Crime Stoppers a successful and effective program. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
On behalf of law enforcement in Asheville and Buncombe County, we just want to thank the mayor and the rest of City Council for your support of Crime Stoppers in designating November as Crime Stoppers Month. Crime Stoppers is a valuable tool for law enforcement as it allows citizens to anonymously give information relating to crime. And we've been able to solve hundreds of crimes as a result of that. So on behalf of law enforcement, we want to say thank you. And Carl Catterjohn, the chair of the Crime Stoppers, has a few words.
Thank you, Chief. One, I was not at the first meeting thirty years ago. I just want to make that clear. In my tenure as chair of Crime Stoppers, first, I'd like to recognize and thank Councilman Pelley for his invaluable help he has been to the organization. I have learned two or three things, which I'd like to pass on. And one, the vast majority of crime in Buncombe County and Asheville is committed by a very small number of people. It seems like the media will create an idea that there are lots of people doing this. There really aren't. And we, as a system which allows anonymously to give a tip where no one will ever know who that person was, they will, we will be able to find somebody and hopefully turn them over to law enforcement. Second, is that the biggest problem people think of are illegal drugs. The biggest problem is now becoming legal drugs. Is that prescription medications are becoming the biggest problem in the county as opposed to illegal drugs. And I just can't emphasize that enough. So I would like to thank the council for this proclamation. I'd like to thank you, Mayor, for signing it. I appreciate everything you've done for us. I'd like to thank my crew. I don't know what else to call them, because without them, I would not be standing here and I'd be pulling my hair out, which a lot of it is left. Thank you very much, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. And I just want to acknowledge your crew as well, because they represent, if I'm not mistaken, the Asheville Savings Bank is one of them. But that public-private partnership is key. Working with business owners has been key. And so I just want to say thank you for your volunteering your time on Crime Stoppers, as well as your crew. So thank you all so very much for being here and all that you do to make sure that we're solving crimes. Again, thank you all. The last proclamation this evening is also declaring November 2013 as Recycle It Month. And Maggie Olman will receive the proclamation from Councilman Bothwell, or Councilman Hunt. Maggie, it's so good to see you.
Mayor Bellamy, thank you so much for allowing me to read this proclamation. This is important to the whole community. Today was my recycling day, and I'm an early riser, and it was about 5:45. And I woke up and said, have I gotten everything to the curb? And I think it's in our blood. Thank you, community, for making this happen, for leaning on council members to push it. And for those of y'all that don't know, Maggie Olman, our Sustainability Director for the city, she provides awesome leadership. And we wouldn't be where we are without Maggie. So I'm going to read this proclamation, and Maggie, if you'd like to say a couple words afterwards, that'd be great. Whereas reducing, reusing, and recycling is good for the environment. And whereas reducing the amount of trash we throw is an important step to lengthening the life of the Buncombe County landfill. And whereas recycling is an easy way to reduce the amount of trash we are sending to the landfill, because building a new landfill will be costly to our citizens. Whereas recycling for city residents has become even easier with the arrival of Big Blue, the single short rollout recycling bin. And whereas in the first year of Big Blue, city residents collectively increased their recycling by twenty-five percent over the previous year and kept 1,526 tons of material out of the landfill. Whereas awareness of the many things that can be recycled and the few things that cannot be recycled helps to divert more items from the landfill. Now therefore, I, Terry Bellamy, Mayor of the city of Asheville, do hereby proclaim November 2013 as Recycle It Month.
Thanks, Councilman Hunt. Counsel, good to see all of you. Just wanted to share some exciting parts of what Recycle It Month will look like. As you heard Councilman Hunt say, we've reduced, or we've increased the amount of recycling by twenty-five percent, which is really significant. And we want to keep going. And so some things that we're doing to really engage and educate the public this month. One is really fun. We're having an upcycled Halloween photo contest. So you have that old sheet you were going to send off to Salvation Army. Make yourself an awesome ghost contest and send the photo to us on Facebook at the city. Whoever wins the costume contest will win some, I guess, solar-powered charging stations for their cell phones, because there's some cool gifts. But generally, we just want to see your cool Halloween costumes. So send them our way and think about recycling when you're making your costume this year and being really crafty and creative. The second thing that we're doing is we're hosting a series of tours. I don't know if y'all have ever seen those shows where you get to see backstage or how things are made. And what we're going to be doing is taking citizens to the Buncombe County landfill, Danny's Dumpster's compost facility, and the Curbside Management Recycling Center. We're hosting these tours open to the public Wednesdays in November, starting on the 6th. So if you want to get more information, register for that. You can go to ashvillenc.gov backslash recycling. And we'll set you up on coming to one of our tours to kind of see all the recycling getting sorted at the plant and really how big our landfill truly is. And we would really love folks to participate in that and the photo contest. So if you want to participate in that photo contest, find us on Facebook. And all the details will be there starting the 26th, just in a couple days. So thank you very much, Counsel, for your leadership. Waste reduction is very important to this community, and it's a really fun thing that we get to do. And hopefully, some of these activities in November will be really fun to get people motivated and included in the conversation. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Maggie. All right, that's all the proclamations we have this evening. Counsel, the next item of business is our consent agenda. And that's one item that was not put on there, and that's the Resolution to Council 1126 meeting. So if we could add that, so the maker of the motion would add that. So it will be the new O on our consent agenda.
Mayor, can I ask that we pull item M off for separate consideration?
All right, so Counsel, there's a motion. First, let's hear from the community. Any member of the community wishing to address counsel on any of the items on our printed agenda, printed consent agenda, may do so at this time. Items A through the added O.
I move to approve all of the...
Just a second. I think we have some...
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have to be in the microphone, and you have to state your name.
Evening, Mayor. My name is Kevin Mahoney. I'm a board member of the ABYSA soccer organization. I just wanted to address agenda N, if this is the appropriate time.
Oh, I pulled off M, but N is...
Oh, I'm sorry. I heard N. Is this the right time?
It is.
Okay.
And she did do M, as in Mary.
Well, thank you. I want to speak in strong support of the Lake Craig Azalea Road Improvement Project that is under consideration tonight by the council. As many of you know, ABYSA is this region's soccer organization. ABYSA provides soccer programming for 5,104 children throughout the community every year. When the adults are added in, it provides soccer programming for 6,489 individuals. ABYSA hosts seven soccer tournaments in Asheville every single year. And in 2012, these tournaments brought in 23,500 visitors to Asheville, which filled over 5,000 hotel rooms. And the Asheville Area Convention and Visitors Bureau estimates that the economic impact from that was in excess of $3 million. The centerpiece and showcase of soccer in this region are the city of Asheville fields, the John V. Lewis Fields at Azalea Park. And the council tonight will consider an agenda item to make improvements, road improvements, and water improvements specifically for that field. And ABYSA, again, is in strong support of that item, obviously. These are first-class facilities that unfortunately don't have first-class access. And the item before you tonight would provide that access, would also provide clean drinking water to 1,200 children who play each Saturday at the fields. That does not include their families and grandparents and all the others who... Village and some pedestrian and bicycle pathways, and also some stream restoration. The City of Asheville and this council in particular have been tremendous, strong partners with ABYSA to support soccer in the community, and we thank you for that. Throughout this process, Kathy Ball and her staff have been particularly good in keeping the public up to speed about the planning process and the design process. So, we thank you for that as well. And again, we thank you for putting together a very complex funding arrangement for this particular project through some challenging times. We know how hard the staff worked. We thank them for that as well. And so, once again, I just want to say that ABYSA strongly supports agenda items N and one, and we look forward to working with the city in the future for the eventual replacement of the flood-damaged fields over at JBL. So, thank you for the opportunity to appear before council.
Okay. And Councilman Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. In fact, I thought that the vice mayor said N as well, so I'm glad that you came up to speak. This is, it's good that we pull this one for separate or just to talk about a bit because I think when one looks at the agenda, it seems like a small thing to appear in consent, but as Mr. Mahoney has said, this is a work that's been going on for a long time. Staff's been very involved in getting the partnerships, the our funding, the council's been dedicated to getting that road in there. It's been a nightmare for years. What a great complex out there. John V. Lewis Soccer Complex is fantastic, but that road has been atrocious. It's amazing that we have not had people hurt or, well, I think we have actually had accidents on the road. It's just a huge thing to have this happen, and this is kind of a linchpin for its completion, and I think that past councils and this one should be very proud that we've been able to do these things for such a great group of people. Thank you for what you all do.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel.
All right. Now, Councilman Bothwell.
So, you're pulling M?
M. I pulled the M.
M. Good. I move to approve the consent agenda except for item M. There.
Second.
The motion has been made in properly second to approve the consent agenda items A through O with the omission of M. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The motion carries unanimously. Vice Mayor Manheimer, item M.
Thank you very much. I just asked this item be pulled out, and I had a number of questions about it, and Martha has been working diligently to answer all of my questions, and what I'm discerning from it is that it's fairly complicated, and I'm wondering if it might be easier just to refer it back to committee and discuss a little more and then bring it back.
Which committee?
Well, it came out of public safety, and based on my conversations with Councilman Smith about public safety, it sounds like maybe some of these nitpicky questions I'm asking about did not get into. But basically, the way I'm reading this, and I did have a chance to look up the two session laws that are at issue, is in 2011, the legislature passed a law preempting cities from banning concealed carry in what they called parks. And the way they defined parks included playgrounds, athletic fields, swimming pools, and athletic facilities, I'm sorry, in parks except for recreational facilities. I'm sorry. So, in other words, in 2011, the legislature said, "Cities, you can't, you cannot ban concealed carry in parks, except you can ban concealed carry in recreational facilities," which includes playgrounds, athletic fields, swimming pools, and athletic facilities. So, that's kind of confusing. But what they did in 2013 is they came back and said, "We..." They removed playground from the definition of recreational facility. So, again, recreational facilities are what this legislature let cities still prohibit guns in. It used to include playgrounds, and now it doesn't. And so, what we have before us is an ordinance amendment that would bring our ordinances in line with the state statute, but it would remove, by doing that, it would remove our list of playgrounds from the facilities where we can prohibit concealed carry. It is a very bizarre result if you look at the list of our recreational facilities because we can prohibit concealed carry in all sorts of places that are recreational in nature except playgrounds, which is, I'm fairly convinced this could not possibly have been intended because it doesn't make any sense. But I am reluctant to adopt an ordinance that brings our ordinances in line with the state statute, and I want to understand more about what our options are, and I also want to take an opportunity to have discussion to make sure I'm not misunderstanding anything because it is complicated. You have to go to this definition, which pushes you over here, and you know, so it is a complicated set of issues.
So, it's going to go back to public safety, if that's okay?
That was a long way of saying it.
All right. So, let's not debate it right now. So, if that's okay, Councilman Bothwell, as chair, if you can go ahead and get that scheduled on the agenda, and Maggie, if you can note. Is that okay?
Sure. We can take it back there.
All right.
Yes, and prior to that meeting, just to be able to seek any clarification necessary from the school of government or the Attorney General's office.
And I remain puzzled about concealed carry in swimming pools.
A challenge, a challenge, a pass.
All right. Counsel, we're going to move over to our presentations and reports. The first one is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a renewal of a memorandum of understanding with UNC Asheville, and I would like to recognize the fact that we have Chancellor Ann Ponder and various members of her staff here, including someone who's near and dear to the hearts of Janet and myself, Janet Cohen, who's worked on several projects with the city in the last few years. But I would like to welcome Chancellor Ponder and the UNC A's staff to present a resolution renewing the memorandum of understanding between the City of Asheville and UNC Asheville. UNC Asheville and the city signed the original MOU in 2009, setting forth a framework for collaboration in areas of mutual interest. The renewal of the MOU continues a longstanding partnership between the City of Asheville and UNC Asheville. It sets forth a plan for future collaborations as well. And at this time, I would like to welcome Chancellor Ponder to the podium for the presentation from UNC Asheville. Welcome, Chancellor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council, for giving us the opportunity to bring this renewal forward. But first, the celebration of what we've accomplished since 2009. Whenever you read about UNC Asheville in national rankings in Fisk and Forbes and U.S. News &amp; World Report and Kiplinger's and Princeton Review, you're talking about our Asheville, and so, we are very grateful for that. Some of the things that we would like to recognize include some people in this room or perhaps in the overflow area watching city council this evening, and so, I'm going to recommend that wherever you are, that you stand and allow us to recognize you. Some of the opportunities that we have had in our current MOU and good reasons for extending include economic development and the Southern Conference Basketball Tournament. UNC Asheville is a full partner in the Asheville-Bunkham Regional Sports Commission in bringing the Southern Conference Basketball Tournament back to Asheville in 2012. There are lots of people across Asheville who worked on that, but none more than the city's own Sam Powers, the city's Economic Development Director. So, Sam, would you please stand, and our own Janet Cohen, UNC Asheville's Athletic Director. Congratulations for your hard work and dedication. Infrastructure improvements. The Reed Creek Greenway Project will fill a missing link in the Reed Greenway connecting UNC Asheville and Montford with downtown, which means that our students will get all the way to downtown on their bicycles or on foot without going along or in the street on Broadway. The UNC Asheville Foundation was a partner here, too. We began the process by purchasing land, and then we worked with the City of Asheville and Riverlink to raise funds to make this project happen. I would like to recognize John Pierce. John is unable to be with us this afternoon, but David Todd from the university is here to represent him. He is the head of our facilities area, and I'd also like to recognize the city's own Roderick Simmons, the city's Parks and Recreation Director. Roderick, and David Todd, please stand. When you're thinking about the cooperation between the university and the City of Asheville, you might not think about public safety, but you'd be in error about that. When we think about Asheville Fire Chief Scott Burnett and UNC Asheville's own Chief of Police Eric Boyce and our emergency management head, David Weldon, we practice together, we plan together. We're even thinking about co-managing a facility that would be located near campus. The stronger coordination during an emergency makes a stronger public safety for all of us on campus and in Asheville. Will Chief Burnett, Chief Boyce, and David Weldon please stand to be recognized? Internships and community service are important for our high school and university students. The City of Asheville Finance Department is pleased to have one of our current UNC Asheville students and one recent UNC Asheville graduate. Indeed, Maggie Olman, as spoke to you earlier, is a UNC Asheville graduate. Asheville City Staff and UNC Asheville continue to seek opportunities for annual internships. One of the mayor's favorite is the KALA program, where City of Asheville Youth Leadership Academy partners with UNC Asheville's Avid Tutoring Program and our Center for Diversity Education and other community groups to plan the Me2We Conference Series. Over 100 students have participated. And so, for this work, I'd like to recognize Erica Germer, the city's KALA leader, UNC Asheville's Deborah Miles, and UNC Asheville's Kim Caseras for making that program such a success. Erica, Deborah, and Kim, please stand to be recognized. Thank you again, City of Asheville and Mayor Bellamy, for the opportunity to present to you this evening. We look forward to continuing our excellent work together in the years ahead, and I ask now that the council consider the resolution brought forth, accepting an extension of our memorandum of understanding.
All right. Counsel, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Mayor, I'd take great pleasure in moving that we extend the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
And if for the questions or comments, any member of the community, since it is official vote, any member of the community wishing to address counsel on this particular issue? All right, Counsel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Chancellor Ponder.
Counsel, if you would join me?
Oh, we're going to do some signing. Let's get ceremony.
And those of you who are here from the City of Asheville, and those of you who represent
And before Chancellor, I know you have to rush out to your next meeting, but I would just like to say, what we just did for the community, why that's so important and why we wanted to take a moment to do this just now, is because it's unprecedented. UNC Asheville and the City of Asheville has continued a relationship that's become a model across the country for other universities to be more integrated in their communities. I speak with managers from across the country, and usually, cities and communities, colleges are in disagreement about the very issues we're collaborating on. And so, I just want to say thank you so very much, Chancellor, for your commitment to collaborating with me as mayor. It has been an absolute pleasure working with you and Janet and your team over the last few years, and I just want to say thank you so very much for what we have done and how you've worked with our staffs and how we've worked together as a community to make it better. Again, thank you.
Yes, Bulldogs!
And I know they would like to say opening season is in a couple of weeks, and if you don't have your ticket to the men or the women's basketball game, please let them know because they can make sure to sell you some.
Seventeen days.
Seventeen days. All right. Now, we're going to get an update from the Ashville City School Board of Education, and we're going to hear from Jaclyn Hallam and Dr. Bobby Short, interim superintendent and chair. And so, it's good to see you, Ms. Hallam and Dr. Short, and thank you so very much for coming this evening.
As you, Mayor and Counsel. Thank you. We're glad to be coming for our annual update to provide to counsel. Before we start, we'd like to just acknowledge our city school staff that's in the room. I think we have one of our board members, Peggy Dollman.
Thank you, Ms. Dollman.
Charlie Glazner, our Communications Director, Donna Watson, our Finance Officer, and Kelvin Sarris, Associate Superintendent. Any other city school staff, first now? And the board members that aren't here, Leah Ferguson, Matt Byes, and Precious Folston, could not be here tonight. So, I'm the operator, and as you mentioned, we have our interim chair, and we're very thankful and grateful to have her on board. She's done a fantastic job.
Wonderful.
Yes. Okay. We have to have our technology advisory. Thank you. So, let's just start talking, if you don't have any questions, where we are today and who we are, and you see our lovely children. So, our average daily membership as of now, over the last four years, has increased about 17%, and we look forward to that continuing. Our membership by race is 59% white, nearly 26% black, and 15% other, and the next slide will be more specific, as you see our piece of the pie. And this is our pupils' membership as of May 2013. This is where we are financially, and our total funding budget is $56.6 million, and our state funding is about 43%, our local funding, 39.5%, our federal funding is nearly 13%, and other funding sources, nearly 5%. Our initial budget by fund, as you can see, is child nutrition, $1.8 million, about three, a little over 3% of our budget. Our state public school fund, nearly $23 million, just over 40% of our budget. Our local current expense fund is nearly $18 million, or 31%. Our capital outlay is $3.8 million, about nearly 7%, and our federal grants are $4.8 million, 8.4%. Other specific revenues are $5.7 million and just under .01%. I'll learn which way to go, Maggie. Dr. Short?
We'd like to share with you briefly three of our new endeavors. We are so excited to be building a new Isaac Dixon Elementary School, the first new school in Asheville City in almost 30 years. So, it really is a red-letter year for us this year to begin that construction. We are building on the present site of the old Dixon, and already, we are in abatement... We are building on the present site of the old Dixon, and already we are in abatement, and we think that building will be ready by August 2015 for occupancy, and we're just really excited about that. The next shot will give you a view of the new building, it's gonna be tremendous, $20 million, about 76,000 square feet, and it will house up to 525 students. So that gives us some wiggle room of actually about 50 to 60 students for new growth. Our second new endeavor we are hopeful of is a new Asheville middle school, and that will cost between 35 and 40 million dollars, and it also will be built on the current site of the Asheville Middle School as it presently stands. And we are hopeful that by August of 2017, we'll be able to move into that new facility. And a shot of that facility is really going to be fantastic. If you've ever been in the Asheville Middle School as we are presently housed, you will notice that there are about 3,000 square feet of corridors in that building, and it's really hard to monitor everything that goes on. And you know when you have sixth, seventh, and eighth graders in a building, you want to monitor everything that goes on. So as we look at our new building, we're going to have a vantage point of looking down the corridor and seeing who's coming and going and who's supposed to be where. So it really is conducive to safety. Our next endeavor is planning for a balanced calendar, and that's a fancy way of saying year-round school. And we're going to start that actually this coming school year, and it will be housed at Hall Fletcher. And that schoolhouse is about 350 students. It's going to be nine weeks of instruction, three weeks of intercession, and really intercession means remediation and enrichment activities for our children. And that is the Hall Fletcher structure, so beautiful with all the artwork. And again, we have increased enrollment, as Jacqueline has said, we've increased enrollment in Asheville City Schools close to 17 percent. But at this particular school, we've increased by almost 50 children this school year, and we added a new kindergarten there. So that shows the progression of the growth we have in our elementary schools, which will eventually impact the middle school also. I want to talk just a little bit about our challenges, and actually I want to give you a statewide perspective. We've all heard about the cuts to our budgets, so I want to show you the impact on teachers. This shows you the beginning teacher salary in 2008-09. You will notice that a beginning teacher then, six years ago, made $30,430. Today, that teacher that began in 2008-09 is a six-year veteran, and that teacher makes There has been one increase for teachers in six years, and that raise was last year, and it was 1.2 percent. As you will see, the teacher pay has increased $370 over a six-year period. And I guess the sad thing about that also is that this year's beginning teacher makes the same amount as the teacher who has been teaching for six years. So we've kind of been at a stalemate. Also, the cost for family hospitalization has gone up to $1,794. If you take the teacher raise out of that, then they're in the hole, about $1,400. Also, that's not even including the cost of living. And as you know, this year is supposed to be the last year of master's pay for teachers, and that's going to be another blow to the earning power of teachers. I want to show you the impact of state budgeting, and we're going to look at some complex formulas in a simplified way, and we're going to take our current student enrollment, because that's the way we are giving our state money, it's based on how many students we have. So this is based on our current enrollment, and you will see that in 2008-09, based on our current enrollment, we would have received 204 teachers from the State Department. This year, we receive 193 based on the current formulas that are being used. Supplies, in 2008-09, if you compare the number of students we have now, we would have received 58, almost $59 per student. This year, based on those same numbers, we received $28 per student. And the next one is a very sad commentary, I think. When you look at textbooks, this year, per student, we received $14.26.
I just want to know, yes, so the state sent Asheville City School System $61,760 for books?
That's correct, for the entire system.
For the entire system.
And if you go down to Barnes &amp; Noble today, it's very difficult to buy a book for $14.26, much less a textbook. So I just wanted to give you a state perspective of where we are with spending. The next slide will show you, which I think is a travesty in terms of our elementary program, the teacher assistance allotment. This year, that allotment was reduced across the state, $120 million. That was a 21 percent reduction just this year. And in Asheville City, it affected our second-grade teacher assistance. But because of the wonderful citizens of Asheville City, Buncombe County, our supplemental tax and our sales tax, we were able to pay from our local funds and to hire these nine positions. So we do have K-2 assistance, but across the state, generally, that is not true. Another endeavor is a new superintendent for Asheville City Schools.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Short. We just wanted to update you where we are in the process in the hiring and recruitment of our new superintendent. Right now, we are, have interviewed search firms, and we selected HYA. And what is HYA? What is the, I mean, Charlie? We can't remember what HYA is, but we have hired them. And we are interviewing them, we are starting to meet with them on the 30th of October, and coming up with our timeline in this process. And I'll be glad to email you. I think I've emailed you already, Mark. Can you remember what HYA is? I can't. We're too used to acronyms. We hope to have a new superintendent onboard by July 1st. The search firm hired this October, and the interview process January through March. Our timeline for the superintendent searches, that we sent out a proposal to search firms, and we had four respond, and we had interviews with three, and we selected the one that we thought best to suit our needs. The application period will open in the next few months with much stakeholder input, so some of you will certainly be getting the call, and hopefully that announcement will be made in June, July of our new superintendent, have them onboard July 1st.
All right.
And if you don't have any questions, that's the end of our presentation.
All right. I want to say thank you so very much for coming, ladies, and providing detailed information that's fact-based. I appreciate that. Our first turnover, Councilman Hunt, as the liaison between the city council and the Asheville City School Board. Councilman Hunt?
Yes, thank you for being here, annual update. Just a couple of things I'd like to offer here. I think most folks in the public understand that Asheville City Schools is a separate entity and not underneath the City of Asheville. People get confused about that, and it's overseen by the board that Ms. Hallam chairs, and I appreciate the efforts so much. I've been in touch with you guys over, since I've been on council, and it really is a time of transition and challenge and opportunity. Now, you guys seem to meet like three times as often as we do, and I appreciate the effort you put in. Last year, we resumed our annual, or we agreed to resume our annual joint meeting of the Board of Education and City Council, and Ms. Hallam and I have talked about achieving that in like the December-January timeframe, and so here in the next few weeks, we'll start putting together a schedule to do that. Very much look forward to that. The challenges that the school district faces and that city council faces have a lot of overlap. We're talking about the same people in our community, many of whom have great needs. And it, I think, as we have these discussions, we appreciate more and more how it needs to be a team effort, a group effort, because the problems are complex, they're not bounded within the school walls. When children and families are outside the school walls, they're at home and in other places in the community, and so other community services the city is more involved in become important. So I really look forward to more engagement, more teamwork, more hand-holding as we try to meet these challenges. Thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Before y'all go, thank you so much for serving and being a part of this, and I'm really looking forward to that annual meeting, because what, some of the things we didn't get to cover tonight, we normally have so much time, is around some of those outcome measures and the achievements, you know, academically, that y'all have been able to do in the face of a really, really challenging financial environment. So as we come to that, I'll look forward to digging deeper into some of those outcomes to see how we can be most supportive as y'all seek to continue to improve that graduation rate and close that achievement gap, and try to really acknowledge and address the, some of the challenges that we have right now.
Thank you for your support.
All right, thank you, ladies. Council, we have a couple of public hearings before we have to recuse the Vice Mayor from one, so we're gonna go through Item A, which is the public hearing to consider an amendment to the conditional zoning of Carefree Asheville, located at 1903 Hendersonville Road, to include a change in housing type and building footprints, a change in the internal road network, and an increase in the number of residential units, including modifications for setbacks in height. Julia Fields will make the presentation, welcome this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Bellamy. Members of council, as was indicated, this is a conditional zoning request, an amendment to a previously approved development on property located at what was once addressed, 1903 Hendersonville Road. Just to orient you, here's Hendersonville Road here. This is the property, although it does reach down here, this should be hatched in red as well. And this is the Walden Ridge Office Park, and Walden Ridge Road is right there, so that just kind of gives you the lay of the land there. The property currently contains a vacant single-family home and the infrastructure for what was originally designed to be an office residential subdivision. There's quite a history to this particular property in terms of development in recent years. I won't belabor it too much, it's in your report, but let me just touch on a few key pieces to that history. In 2006, the front portion of the property, this port, well, actually, this little portion down here was zoned highway business. This portion was zoned office business, and the back portion was zoned RM8. A proposal at that time was approved by city staff, it didn't have to come to city council for an office residential subdivision. Significant grading, and if you were able to get up there, sometimes the little gate is closed and sometimes it's not, but if you were able to go up there, you could see that there is significant infrastructure development in place there on the site. Most utilities were installed, curbing and roadway construction was largely completed, and that's of course what you can see. The project was abandoned in 2007, and the property placed on the market. In 2008, another developer submitted a proposal to the city, which did come before city council, for 144-unit residential development to be known as Carefree Village. Let me just briefly, just for point of comparison of the two developments, and again, here's Hendersonville Road. This was the Carefree Development Proposal. You can see there were housing units all throughout the site, a mix of housing types. This was to be sort of higher-density residential, some townhomes, a mix of single-family, quadruplex, and duplex up at the top was the proposal at that time. This necessitated a conditional use application to RM16 CZ with a residential density bonus that was granted under our ordinance, a provision in our ordinance at that time called the exceptional development bonus. This bonus for this particular property at that time was based on proposed site design, although the ordinance allowed it to be granted based on the provision of affordable housing. But this particular proposal that was passed by city council in 2008 did not have an affordable component to the development. Setback in height modifications were granted to this particular development, and a variance granted to allow a greater extent of grading. This development also, as many in 2008, was never pursued because of the economy post the approval by city council. We now have a new developer, Evolve LLC, proposing to develop a development to be known as, zoom in, I forgot how to do it. There we go. Proposing to develop a, an apartment complex called Evolve Mountain View with five additional units. So you'll remember that there were 144 approved under the previous CZ, and now they're looking at 149 units with revisions to the type and location of these dwelling units. The proposal for this community is a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom apartments in six buildings, and you can see, kind of dotted around the property, but mostly concentrated to the Hendersonville Road side of the property with a clubhouse and pool amenity. Access is off that main drive, again, if you went out there, from Hendersonville Road. While much of the rest of the existing road system will be retained under the proposal because so much infrastructure is in place, the developer is removing, and you'll take a look back at this, they are removing these cul-de-sac areas and a lot of the paving that was in that particular portion of the last approved development. They're removing those cul-de-sacs at the western end of the property, and plans are to restore these areas to either a natural state or to convert them into open space amenities primarily natural in nature. And I'll talk about those open space amenities in just a minute. This property is subject to steep slope regulations, both Zone B and Zone A. This very top portion is Zone B, the rest is Zone A. Under the regulations, under the Zone A and Zone B regulations, if the property is zoned RM16, 24 units are allowed in this Zone B portion, and they're proposing 24 in one single apartment building, and the developer's proposing 125 units in the rest of the property, the Zone A portion, and 85 would be allowed. So there's a difference in 40 units, and to be able to do those additional 40 units, they're requesting retention of the previously granted development standards bonus. And you'll recall, I said that the development standards bonus allowed granting of a density bonus for site amenities, but also, it wasn't taken advantage of the last time, that development standards under this bonus allowed multifamily projects with less than 20 percent of the housing units meeting city standards for affordability to have a maximum density of 150 percent of the base allowable density, and that would be 163. Again, what they're proposing here is 149. In the staff report, I indicated that they were proposing an affordable component of seven units, and over the weekend with some discussion, they are now proposing close to 10 percent, they're proposing 14 affordable units. And so that's, even though the staff report says seven, right now, what's before you is 14 units. They've also provided a plan that outlines other features that support the development bonus, preservation of mature woodlands. Again, you'll recall, I said that they were pulling a lot of the development away from this western portion, and I really should probably have this plan oriented a different way, but they're pulling a lot away, so they're gonna leave 23 percent of the site as natural woodlands, and they're promoting such amenities as a walking path, a dog park, and community gardens. walking path, a dog park, and community gardens. They've also provided us with a list of green and sustainable building practices. I won't go through them. If you have any questions, you can ask myself or the developer about this. In addition to the density bonus before you, they're seeking a modification to the height of Building 300, which is this building right here. It's a one and two and a quarter inch height modification. And because of the nature of the site and the grading that's already taken place and the infrastructures that's in place, they're asking for setback modifications like were granted with the previous development to the northern and southern boundaries. They're asking for a 25-foot setback modification and providing 15 feet of setback. Staff is supportive of these modifications as the property at both these points, but office business zoning on both sides, which allows a 60-foot high tall buildings and only requires 10-foot setbacks. So it's sort of a comparable, and actually, it's, it's less height and comparable setbacks. And also due to the limitations for development presented by the existing infrastructure and the topography on the site. TRC met in August and approved this development with conditions. Many of those conditions have been met in the site plans that you see before you. In August, also, the Board of Adjustment, like they had done previously, reviewed a variance request with respect to grading because of so much grading already done on the site and they did grant a variance to the extent of grading that would be allowed on the site. On September 4th, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard this matter. At that meeting, there were only four members present and a few adjoining property owners were present at that meeting and they expressed their concerns to the Planning and Zoning Commission members about the impact of this project on their properties. The Commission voted one to three against recommending this project to you and they encouraged the developer to meet with the property owners to try to address their issues prior to coming to council. The main issues were with folks that own property or own homes back here in Blake Mountain Estates. This is Wes. So it's the folks that are back here. We also heard from one-
Julie, have to move it over so we can see it.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so a couple of property, the property owners who spoke at the meeting, it was either two or three, had properties back in this particular area. It's my understanding that they have met with these property owners. I'll let the developer discuss and go over these conversations that they've had with you, but it's my understanding that they do have letters of support from these same property owners that attended that meeting. To address their concerns, the plans that you have before you, as opposed to the ones that went before the Planning and Zoning Commission, they pulled, there was a walking path proposed back here, they pulled that walking path in, they've also, they're also now showing a fence that separates this particular area from this very first building up here. So again, it's my understanding, I'll let them go over those conversations with you. I did hear from one adjoining property owner today and it's this gentleman here, he did not attend that particular meeting. He was at the Board of Adjustment meeting, he was unable to attend the meeting tonight. He indicated that he much prefers this design as opposed to the other design. His concern is with traffic on Hendersonville Road and he wanted me to convey that to you. But he does definitely prefer this design because it pulls the development away from his property as opposed to the previous design. Planning staff is supportive of this proposal, feeling that it meets a number of council goals, including green building, placing appropriate high-density development along major transportation corridors, and providing affordable housing. And again, that's increased now to 14 units. That completes my presentation.
Thank you so very much for your comments. And we're going to open it up for public hearing at this time, first hearing from a representative from the developer. If you come for it, state your name.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmember staff. My name is Derek Allen. My address is 82 Patton Avenue. We represent the applicant Evolve Development LLC. We have a couple of representatives from Evolve here with us this evening, Scott Austin and Barrett Hagan. Barrett Hagan's done all the drawings. Scott is the one who's been going out and meeting with the member, the members of the neighborhood behind, both in groups and as individuals. Staff did a great job in getting us prepped as we went through the application process and also did a great job with the report. And I'll try not to be redundant. The history's absolutely right. 2006, there was a failed project that was office and residential. In 2008, another crack was taken at this and that was met with a real estate collapse. That project had 144 units, most of which were in attached housing, either in apartments or in quads or in tries, duplexes and then some detached dwellings. Those dwellings included 40-foot tall structures and that's important because that gets to a three-story unit similar to what our tallest building would be. Fast forward, Asheville Savings Bank foreclosed the property. It's currently in their OREO assets and my folks have it under contract. Infrastructure's in place with two cul-de-sacs that are out there, those are scheduled to be removed and most utilities are in place. If you look at the project, you'll see on the northern part of it, there is an existing entrance that will also be abandoned. There'll only be one entrance into this project. We're able to do that because all of these buildings will have sprinklers in place. I'm going to hand up a couple of materials here, if I may. I'm also going to hand up one loose page that I just received before the meeting and that's to be added to Section 5, which are the neighbor support letters. Each of the three folks on the western boundary and we know them by name and they've been very helpful in adding input to this. Vivian Snyder, I've got an email from her indicating her support. Right beside her is Dr. Lippavane, there's an email, a signature from him, and then Kevin Jackson and that's a letter I'm going to hand up now. We met with those folks, both in forum style and then individually and as groups, talked to them on the phone, listened to what their comments were, talked about what is allowed right now, went to their properties. They're very accommodating, let us get on their back porches and take pictures and take a look and see what it's going to look like from their point of view. We talked about where the walking paths should go and where a fence should go. We appreciate and applaud their efforts in helping us make this a better project, both for them and for us and for the city. Technically speaking, this is an amended, an amendment proposed to an existing zoning classification. The amendments include reworking the roadwork, which I've already discussed, different footprints, obviously, with us having six buildings, an increase of five units from 144 to 149, a height modification of an inch, one foot, two and a quarter inches, and then a side setback modification. Those modifications on the buildings really are geared towards not doing any more grading out there. The property is already graded, we're trying not to go out and do that. Anything that we're doing to the existing grading out there is going to be adding open space and making sure that woodlands are preserved. Like I said, there's six buildings. We've tried to cluster and this is a staff design, this fits with the exceptional development standards, try to cluster the development closest to the, the office and commercial uses on Hendersonville Highway. This thing comes in at 12.2 units per acre, changes from the last project. And the last project, let me walk you through those, the packet. The first is just an aerial and it shows you what's out there right now, that open space there. Hendersonville Highway is the abandoned McDonald's. At the second tab, just to give you something to compare to, is the currently approved site plan for the existing zoning. At Tab 3 is the live site plan that we're proposing. This is the one that is after planning board and incorporates the neighbor comments and concerns, which include bringing the walking trail closer to Building 600, which is the westernmost building, and also installation of a six-foot fence. That fence follows essentially the contours. If you look on the western part of this property on the contour map, there's about a 50-foot drop from the back property line to the, to the building foot of that building 600 there. Tab 4 is, are the exceptional site development standards and goals that we prepared at staff request. That outlines what we're doing, this to qualify as exceptional development. And then that Tab 5 is the neighbor letters from Mr. Rusty Poyham, who owns the commercial and office properties to both the north and the south, and Dr. Lippavane, who owns the middle property, the one directly behind, proposed Building 600, Vivian Snyder, who owns the northernmost parcel, and then of course, the loose one is for Mr. Jackson, who owns the southernmost portion. Other things that we've done to make sure that this development makes sense for all concerned, we've added in a workforce housing component. The one in 2008 had zero workforce housing, affordable housing, and we're doing that to city standards, 8% of AMI. At planning board, we had it at 5%. We're now willing to do 10% or to do what makes sense and it fits with our model. Preservation of mature woodlands, we have 2.88 acres. That doesn't include the .86 acres that we're going to reforest and pulling up the cul-de-sacs. That's 23% of the total site. We have a walking trail, clubhouse, pool, dog park, tot lot. Sustainable building practices are outlined in that Tab 4, which include high efficiency fixtures, industry-starred ratings, CER ratings higher than code, and this is clearly an infill development along one of the most heavily trafficked thoroughfares in our town. I mentioned the two forums we had with the neighbors, there've been the multiple follow-up meetings. We took a big site plan with us to those meetings, had them mark on with their name and address, what their concerns were, and then tried to fit our site plan and our goals back to what they were giving us. The comments that we've heard that compare this back to the Carefree project of 2008, they liked that there were fewer buildings, particularly on the western part, they liked there's less roadway, they liked there were fewer house tops. If you look just at that Building 600, which is the westernmost parcel, now there is, there's one building proposed with 24 units. Before, there were 17 buildings proposed with 32 units and were 50 feet further in, further away from their property. There's more green area and more mature forest preservation. Again, I want to thank staff, I want to thank the neighbors. I would encourage you to vote for this project. It makes sense with the policy objectives of City Council, makes sense with our comprehensive plan, makes sense for this area, makes sense for the market, makes sense for these neighbors, and we urge your positive vote. I'll be happy to answer questions or turn it over to my clients for those as well.
Okay, thank you so very much. We want to continue with the public hearing at this time. Any member of the community wishing to address council on this particular issue may do so at this time. Seeing no one come forward, council, we're going to close the public hearing to public comment. Any questions, comments, or motion? Councilman Hunt?
Yes. We feel the, I think I understood you to say that, that the staff report suggested 5% affordable, but the understanding now is 10%.
That's correct.
And, and I'll be-
Close to 10%, it's right under 10%.
14 units, I think. I'd be prepared to, to move approval here, but it seems that we must include the 14-unit requirements, it's just not reflected in the staff report.
And that would, that would be a condition of the approval, yes, I would agree.
Well, with that condition, I move to approve the amendment to the conditional zoning, RM16 CZ on this property, subject to the conditions recommended by staff, the standard conditions listed below, and the modifications in density bonus requested. And I found that the request is reasonable and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans based on information provided in the staff report and as stated in the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any additional comments from council?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
It's, I really appreciate what y'all have done to improve this project and I'm especially impressed with the woodland preservation and the inclusion of the community garden, recognizing that these are important values of the community going forward, and also just that, that willingness to substantively address the affordable housing needs in our community. This is a really big issue and something that I personally would like to work with builders to make sure that everything we're doing in the city has affordable housing components to it. We're in a position right now as a city where there are too many people who work a full-time job in the city who can't afford to live here. We've had an ongoing crisis around affordable housing for some time and it's my hope that in the next iteration of this council, we're going to be able to have some more substantive policy discussions around how we can get to a much better place in regards to affordable housing. We need thousands more units out there. The willingness of this builder to include this, priority even stepping forward to this body to make that decision, says a lot about the, the character of the group and that real willingness to help serve the needs of the community. So I'm real grateful for that and looking forward to this future policy discussion around how we can actually meet our affordable housing needs. Thank you.
Councilman Pelley?
Mayor, earlier tonight in our consent agenda, we adopted approval of a proposal to bring sidewalks to Hendersonville Road. This is from I-40 all the way down to Long Shole Road. This is a $4 million-plus project that many, many residents of South Asheville have longed for, for many years. We, as a city, are trying to do our part to contribute to quality of life for the residents of South Asheville and all of the city here. And like Councilman Smith, I appreciate the fact that you have increased the number of affordable units in here, but I think, I think a good faith measure at this point here was, given that we have 149 units, I think truly 10% is really 15 units and I would hope that you would consider allowing us to, you know, get as close to 10% as we can. Frankly, I'd like to see that number of 15 or 20%, but I recognize that we have to balance things as well here too. But again, the other part of it is also here, we've seen the news that the city of Asheville has the lowest unemployment rate of the major cities in North Carolina and that's a good thing, but we also recognize that many, many of those jobs are in the leisure and hospitality industry, traditionally low-wage jobs, and it's real important that we try and balance that job growth with affordable housing so as Councilman Smith said, the people that work these jobs can afford to live in the city in which they work there. So I'm hopeful that you would consider just that minor change to 15 units, given that there's actually 149 units under consideration here.
Any other comments from council? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Council, we're going to move on to our next item on the agenda. Item B, the public hearing to consider conditional zoning of property located at the intersection of Clingman Avenue Extension and Robert Street from Commercial Industrial District and River District to Urban Place District, conditional zoning to facilitate a mixed-use development known as Red Lofts, including a modification request on the building size. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. McGlohan to begin with.
Yes, members of council, what you all are considering is a conditional zoning and a conditional zoning is limited to the sites, is site-specific and it is based on those specific conditions that council comes up with that goes with the requirements of the ordinance. The conditional zoning requires no specific findings. The decision should be based on sound land use guidance principles. The individual conditions and site-specific standards that can be imposed are limited to those needed to bring a project into compliance with the city's ordinance and adopted plans and those addressing the impacts reasonably expected to, expected to be generated from the development or use of the site. In your UDO, under Section 7-7-8C, there are specific examples, examples of conditions and by way of illustration and not limitations, conditions may specify a location on the property of the proposed structure, the number of dwelling units, the location and extent of supporting facilities such as parking lots, driveways, et cetera. I make this brief statement because I believe that several council members may have some questions about perhaps affordable housing as well as parking spaces for bicycles and to the extent that the request for additional spaces is reasonably related to the rezoning, that is sufficient for council to consider in a rezoning request. Also, keep in mind that this project is also being considered for a land use incentive grant. That is a separate process altogether and that is not before the council tonight. You all would first make a determination as to whether or not to grant the rezoning and then staff will, at a subsequent meeting, bring back to you the issue of whether to grant the land use incentive grant.
All right, Ms. Bernstein, it's all yours. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, members of the public, this is a request to review a conditional zoning from River and CI Commercial Industrial to Urban Place to construct a mixed-use development. As you can see on the exhibit map with the aerial up on the screen, the site consists of two separate parcels bisected by Robert Street. This is in the River Arts District. To orient you, it's the former Dave Steele site, so I know all council members are quite familiar with this site. Clingman Avenue Extension, Robert Street, and then there's also a small frontage on Park Avenue North. Adjacent zoning, as you can see, is also River and Commercial Industrial. Adjacent zoning, as you can see, is also River and Commercial Industrial. It's an outdated aerial, the site is mostly vacant at this time. The proposal is to develop a mixed-use development, as I mentioned, with 209 residential units, just over 42,000 square feet for retail spaces. It's currently shown as about 26 spaces, separate spaces on the plans, but certainly that could go up or down depending on the unit or the tenant mix. And then just under 12,000 square feet of office space. The residential mix has one and two-bedroom units to make up that 209, and that's about 175,000 square feet of residential. As you can see here, it's a little dark on the screen, but there are seven buildings, A through G, that, that from the ground up appear to be seven separate structures. But they are, A through F are all on a shared base of parking. The project does have 338 parking spaces in that, in two, on two levels that are mostly underground, but with the site's topography, they'll be open from Park Avenue in the rear, but difficult to see with that grade change. There's also a small surface parking lot across the street on Roberts. That's got 24 spaces, and then through some streetscape improvements along Robert Street, about 15 spaces will be formally delineated. The buildings are between two and seven stories. No building will exceed 75 feet per the building code. And as you can see, some of their buildings, the buildings have frontage along Robert Street and Klingman Avenue. And then also there's two buildings that really are just interior to the site, and those are all residential. The other buildings have a mix of units with the retail and office lower to the ground. There are sidewalks provided on all frontages. You saw in the staff report, there's two modifications that are associated with this proposal. One of those is a staff-level modification that has to do with sidewalk width. Urban Place requires a minimum of 10-foot wide sidewalks. And for the most part, that is provided on the proposal. The sidewalk, there's an existing sidewalk up along Park Avenue that does not meet that, that width. The project doesn't interact with Park Avenue at all because of that grade change, and so they're not proposing to make that a real active pedestrian route. Also, Park Avenue dead ends up there, and our Public Works Department has perhaps some plans in mind for that, that stretch right away in the future. So they actually recommended that we not require the 10-foot wide sidewalks up on Park. There's a less than, about six-foot sidewalk on Robert Street on the side of the parking lot. It's 10 feet across the street on Roberts. And then Klingman Avenue is mostly 10 feet, narrows down to about six feet towards the northern end. And as I mentioned, that's an administrative modification that has already been approved by our traffic engineer. The other modification has to do with building size, and this is also, this one's a little complicated. It's mostly built, it's on a technicality, really. The Urban Place zoning district has a maximum gross floor area of 200,000 square feet, and that is to avoid a large blocky building. As you can see, and as I mentioned on the plans from the ground up, it looks like, it looks and functions like seven separate structures. It's really designed to comply with the other design guidelines and goals and objectives of Urban Place, and really will interact well with the environment and the pedestrian. But because of that parking I mentioned, those first six buildings are all on one shared base of parking. So technically, it's one building, and when you combine all the individual square footagees for those buildings, it exceeds the maximum. So technically, we do have to request that modification. But staff is definitely supportive of that because of the way the project will look and feel above ground. The project was approved with conditions by the TRC on September 16th and unanimously recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission earlier this month. Staff has received some public comments, primarily regarding the elimination of on-street parking along Klingman that exists today. Not formally exists, but, but there is parking that's happening along Klingman Avenue. Increased traffic and also maintaining affordability of residential and retail or artist spaces in the area. The project was also reviewed by the River District Design Review Subcommittee. They endorsed the design and informally reviewed by the Riverfront Redevelopment Commission on, on the 10th of October, and they informally supported the proposal. So staff does feel like this proposal complies with the city's goals and objectives, especially in, with regard to infill development, mixed use, getting residential units in an area that's walkable already, as well as walkable to downtown, and the economic vibrancy that's targeted in this River Arts District. Those are all goals that you'll find in the 2025 plan, as well as other officially adopted goals and plans. So staff does recommend approval of the conditional zoning with that modification I mentioned. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you so very much. At this time, we'll hear from a representative from the developer.
Sorry, had to get all set up there. Mayor Bellamy, members of council, my name is Matt Sprouse. I'm one of the principals of SiteWork Studios. We're the landscape architects on the project, and I'm not the only member of the team. We have with us Jeff Dalton of Row House Architects and Robin Rains of Row House Architects. And Robin's going to also present with me in a little bit. And I also have Harry Pilos, who is the developer and member of Delphi Development. We're really excited to present this to you. I am especially, I've had my office on Depot Street now for almost nine years. I've seen a lot of changes happen in the River Arts District. I've seen a lot of positive changes happen in the River Arts District, and this, this project really excites us a lot. And my job tonight is to walk you through kind of the big picture, and then Ms. Rains is going to come up here and talk a little bit about the architecture and the levels and how it all kind of fits together. But as you can see, and right now, the existing condition is, Dave Steele was established, you know, early part of the 20th century. It operated until just a few years ago. They've moved that operation, and now we, we have this, this kind of empty place in the River Arts District that we've all known for a long time, something special is going to happen there. Just to get an idea of context and all the stuff that's going on, our project site is here, let me use my pen instead. This is the Klingman Avenue, roundabout Riverlink Bridge, Klingman Avenue Extension and Robert Street, and then Depot Street continues on down. The future New Belgium site's just right across the river, and there's a number of proposed greenways that are starting to crisscross through the district. Proposed greenways, I'll say. The site, as Ms. Bernstein mentioned, is, the buildings are set up, really seven buildings sitting on one kind of superstructure, but to be read more like seven buildings. And to orient you, because we'll be talking about these buildings through the presentation, Building A, which runs down the frontage of Robert Street, B and C, which really kind of face onto Park Avenue and into an interior courtyard, D and E, which run along Klingman Avenue and facing into an interior courtyard, F, which is sort of a freestanding commercial building here at the northern end of Klingman, and then Building G. Building G is the only building that doesn't have the parking underneath it. And as you can see, anyone who's familiar with the River Arts District, this is the big five-point intersection here with Lyman Court and Depot. Klingman Cafe sits here on the corner, and Odyssey and Ferguson up towards the top, and the Wedge Studios are up here. Believe that Ms. Bernstein showed this image. This is, we feel like this is a really good representation of how this is going to read as multiple buildings. And to orient you, this is, this is Robert Street here with the parking lot across the street, the proposed parking lot across the street, which is the, that smaller parcel. And then Klingman Extension is here with Building A along Roberts, B and C, D, E and F, and then Building G here, this kind of freestanding. If you were to be, if you were on Robert Street looking at the buildings, one of the great features of this site is we're not just lining the whole streetscape of Roberts and Klingman with buildings. We're actually bisecting through this property and creating an avenue, pedestrian avenue that's about 30 feet wide, that's cutting up from Robert Street up to Klingman. And along this will be plenty of commercial and retail and a safe connection between the two streets for pedestrians. Looking up Klingman Avenue, it's about a three-story facade. Steps up to a four-story facade as you get up north on Klingman. The point of Klingman and Roberts has a small public space there that could be restaurant, could be just gathering area. I'm trying to go quickly because I want to give Ms. Rains time to talk, too. This is on Robert Street, as if I was standing up near sort of the Wedge Building, looking south. This is Building A and then Building G here at the end. And then up on Park Avenue, you'll see that about three stories of residential kind of step up above Park Avenue. Though there is no connection, and I think Mrs. Bernstein mentioned that, we will have quite a, quite a presence there and some great views coming out of the, out of the units. And then in between Buildings B and C and E and D is a private courtyard for the residences that live there. I wanted to step back quickly to the site plan and just mention, there is a two-level parking deck amidst all this, all this development. And the way this works is, most of the residential parking comes here off of Klingman on what we're calling the upper deck. And then the majority of the commercial parking happens down here on Roberts. And they don't have an internal connection, they sort of sit one on top of each other. And they're tucked back into that hole that's, that the site is kind of, you know, there's a lot of elevation change in there, and then the buildings wrap around the edge. So there's really not a place where you would see any of the parking except for these entrances. And then there is the surface parking over here on the smaller lot, and then there are 15 more spaces due to some streetscape improvements that are being proposed. And I'm going to let Mrs. Rains step up here and walk through the levels of the building because I think that will make, help understand how many levels there are.
I'm just going to walk you through the floor plans. This is the first floor plan. This is my first time using one of these. Okay, this is the parking from the first floor. This is where the commercial will enter.
Although you did state your name, could you state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Robin Rains. I'm with Row House Architects.
And you can pull the mic down.
Okay. This is the commercial entrance to the parking level, first level. The beige color, it's retail spaces, and this is maybe a restaurant, maybe retail. And this is the lobby entry from Robert, Roberts for the apartments. And then the second floor steps up with parking off Klingman for the residents. And then the retails have mezzanine spaces on the second floor, so it'll be a two-story open retail loft with more retail along Klingman, retail and restaurant here. The third level, we start to introduce the residential. The green is two-bedroom units, and the gray is a one-bedroom unit. This is some community space. And also on the top of the parking garage, we will have an interior courtyard for the residents to enjoy. This is the pedestrian walkway that Matt was talking about, the 30-foot wide space between the two buildings. And then the freestanding building would start to become office suites at this level. The fourth level is, again, residential, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, office suites in the freestanding building. The fifth floor plan, we see a roof on the freestanding building, and we start to drop levels on the Robert Street elevation, and then we have one bedrooms, two bedrooms. Sixth floor plan, we have no more residences on the Roberts level and one bedroom, two bedroom everywhere else. And then the seventh floor plan, the only area where you will have residential will be the park side, and there will be one and two-bedroom units with some rooftop decks. And that's the floor plan.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, we're opening up for other input from the community. Anyone else wishing to address council on this particular issue? All right, we will close, yes, sir. If you come forward and state your name for the record when you get to the microphone.
My name is Tim Schaller. I'm coming on behalf of the River Arts District Business Association. We've sort of took an internal poll on what we feel about this project. Basically, we've known this, this hole in the ground was going to have something. I think that Harry is probably the right guy to put something in there. Probably change is not easy for everyone, so we know that it'll have an impact. Some of the impacts that we are concerned about are parking, the construction disruption of business, need for crosswalks, all this stuff that I think the city could probably partake in. One of our complaints down there for the last couple of years is we've had promises about some parking on Depot Street that hasn't happened. So we're hoping this will spur that forward a little bit. But one idea that we have had and have talked to Harry about, and I know it's a stretch, we're the business group, so we know there's a bottom line, but we would like to see some type of affordable studio space, live-work studio space. We live in the, we are in the River Arts District. If we don't have studios for artists, we're not going to have a River Arts District. This kind of project will start to pick up the rents in the district at some point. Artists won't be able to afford to be in the district. So we're trying to focus on what the River Arts District is and asking support from whoever we can get to, to make this kind, this work. We're willing to work with Harry as much as we can to make it work, so that's, we have.
All right, thank you very much. Any other member of the community wishing to address council on this particular issue? All right, we'll close the public hearing to public comment and bring her back to council. Council, this is a public hearing, any questions, comments, or emotion? Councilman Hunt and Councilman Bothwell.
I, I think this is an incredibly valuable transformative project for the River Arts District, and I plan to support it. I, I have some concerns I'd like to express and perhaps some dialogue with Mr. Pilos here in a second. Concerns, Mr. Schauer just mentioned affordability, which I think would be a great thing to achieve in this project. And council doesn't see the detail of these projects until late in the going off. And I, I did visit with the developer earlier and did have a chance to inquire a little bit, but I, I find myself catching up here the last few days on some of the detail. I understand there's some, there are a few points that are still in play. Ms. McGlohan mentioned that a land use incentive grant is perhaps being discussed and negotiated here. And there could be conditions and, and features of that that could help resolve some of these things. But some of the things that I think would be important, first of all, I agree that affordable units in the, in the development would be a key goal. Another is getting away from utility poles in the middle of sidewalks. And this is something that comes up very frequently these days. And we've got an item on the agenda later that's going to help us deal with that in certain ways going forward. But I was disappointed to learn that, that the approval that we seem about to make does not preclude phone poles in the middle of the sidewalk along Klingman. It may be that that's achievable, the developer may choose to underground them. We may negotiate on the land use incentive grant. But with this approval, the city doesn't really have the authority to make that happen. And I, I just, Gary, I'd like to say that I, I have some disappointment that, and again, I, I could have inquired weeks ago, learned myself earlier, but I, I feel like there are things remaining here to be resolved that I would have preferred to see resolved. And I've been, Mr. Pilos, if you don't mind, let me ask for your, what's your view of the, the aerial utilities on poles in the sidewalk on Kling- How do you see the-
My understanding is that Progress Entity slash Duke has a new program. We learned this from city staff that will help contribute to putting everything underground. They'll pay for it, you don't have to, I don't have to, if our loads are enough. And believe me, our loads are going to be plenty. So through the city, you know, we anticipate all that going underground and having Duke Power do it under- Power do it under their new program. Am I wrong about that?
Well, Duke Energy got here. Jason, come on up. So we're going to call on Jason Walls for clarification, how about that?
Hey, that works for me. Let's just work this out right now.
You come to all our meetings anyway, Jason.
No, I mean, so there's not really a new program in place. I mean, it has always been our practice that developments that use the underground utilities should have the responsibility to pay for those underground utilities. But to Mr. Pelosi's point, if the load is sufficient, the way that that cost is designed, so there's a cost matrix that comes about that says, how much is your load? And then what will the cost be to meet that load? If the cost is sufficient at a certain level, then it could be that the company would pick up that cost because it would be an ongoing stream of revenue for the company. But it's all based on load, it's based on a lot of other factors, and it's certainly something that the company would entertain a continuation of the conversation. But there's not a specific program, but there's always been an intent to work with customers that are interested in doing so, just placing the appropriate financial burden on those customers that will directly benefit and not all customers across the region. And so it's a conversation we absolutely can, you know, we're willing to continue having.
Well, I'd like to follow up by saying that I appreciate that, and the commitment to be part of the team and think about this and work on it is important. It's real, I think that this is going to be an extremely popular project that will draw many, many people beyond the residents and folks there, and getting these utilities undergrounded is important. And in fact, if the city can play a role and if co-investment with Duke and with the developer might be required, I'm prepared to say that I would support, you know, some reasonable investment by the city to do that because this is the kind of infrastructure redevelopment that's key to our strategic aims in the city. And I, Mr. Pelosi, I hope you will say you'll work with us in good faith and negotiate, and I appreciate your saying that you hate aerial utilities like we do. And in terms of the land use incentive grant, is it truly your willingness to look at that with us and consider things like affordability?
If you could just state your name for the record so we can have it in there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Jason Walls, District Manager, Duke Energy Progress.
Thank you.
Got a deal?
So we're going to continue to work with the city staff. You guys give them some tools to work with on economic development and some flexibility, but we're going to work in good faith as we have for the last six months.
Great. So, you know, the two things, affordability and the utilities are the big pillars for me, and I know there are other things in play that may, you know, figure in the mix back. I just want to say I appreciate your willingness to continue working on this with us, and I'm prepared to support the resolution tonight.
There's not a motion, is there a motion as well?
I'm not prepared to read it if somebody else would like.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Okay, Councilman Smith.
Thanks for being here, Harry, and you're really stepping up to a really big project here. Forty-three million dollar investment, is that correct?
Forty-three, not a penny more.
I think you said that about thirty-five.
Yeah, you've got a bigger garage now.
You're being able to remediate this site, I know this is not an easy site to build on with the steel operation that was there before and all the prep work you're going to have to do, you've got some bad dirt there you're going to have to deal with, and I know that you're having to take some pretty mighty steps to make this happen. At the same time, I really appreciate your willingness to be sensitive to the denizens of the River Arts District and so many people who identify with that area as being part of the heart and soul of our city. And going forward, being able to work with staff to address some of these affordability issues as well as some of the environmental issues around that Councilman Hunt brought up is something that's really important, not just to the members of council up here, but also to the members of the community. And I was just wondering if you could speak for a moment about kind of how you're interacting with the community and what your thoughts are about that.
I'm a pretty accessible guy, as you well know, and I've been down there a lot. We've met with every small group that we could and the businesses around the area. You know, look, I've been doing this for sixteen years here in Asheville. We started in downtown, the Southern Slope, blah, blah, blah. You know, we don't want to compete with the existing businesses down there. The symbiosis that I'm envisioning on the affordable workspace, there's a project down on Robert Street, it's in play right now, that will supply this inexpensive workspace for the artists, which is great and what they need. I can't do that at the cost of this project. What we can do is have lots of good gallery space that helps them retail, manufacture down the street on Robert Street, retail it out in our project, and the economics should work. We're not going after any nationals, made that commitment to everybody down there. I don't see nationals going down the River District for a long, long time to come, but we will stay local, we'll stay regional, and try and create the kind of symbiotic relationship that pulls it all together. The garage is the key to that. People need a safe place to walk, a safe place to park, and a central location to disperse from to all the art galleries and workspace in the area. And bringing the housing to it, you know, the housing is going to be important. And the quiet zone, as I understand it, is all but done and should be the Horns of Sublime on December 4th. I confirmed that today, so that's what they're telling me.
So as far as the affordable housing pieces going forward, it sounds like you're willing to sit down with staff and try to hammer out some ways that you can still make the numbers work and we can get some of these affordability needs, Matt.
Gordon, you know, a work, it's a math game. These things are very, very expensive. Affordable housing number on one-bedroom is six fifty, and I think that includes some utilities. I did my interview on affordable housing and the questionnaire and all that a couple of days ago, so we did our homework in that. You know, at six hundred and fifty bucks, the product that we're producing with the garage and the parking structure and all that, it's a big gap, and I cannot do it. I simply cannot make the math done. Now, what I will do, and speaking with staff today, is we will calculate what subsidy is required for ten years to make the numbers work so I can make a mortgage payment and keep the lights on, and then we'll pass that on to staff, and then they can send it up to you, and you can decide, are you willing to make that subsidy to gain however many units you seek to desire? And I'll do that math.
Thank you. You've got a reputation as being somebody who always says it the way he means it, and so I believe you when you say it.
Okay, I'll do it.
Harry never lets you down.
All right, Councilman Bothwell.
Yeah, I'd like to add, you know, we're putting requirements on you, I don't want to add another layer to this. If the rents are going to include utilities, I would urge you to look hard at the benefits of installing solar on that vast roof you have there because other businesses in that River Arts District are doing that, New Belgium, for instance, and others. And you can amortize the cost of the investment in solar panels, it's a business expense, so it even exceeds the tax benefits you can get from the tax write-offs. And solar is becoming so affordable now that it's really a good business choice, and I'd hope you can contribute to the.
I'd be on that. But the first calls I made was the Brownie next door in the solar business and said, I'm going to have a bunch of roofs.
I just wanted to hear that from you, thank you.
Can we work something out? I don't understand the economics, we're going to study it, we're going to look at a lot of options. Two things that I did promise staff and will follow through is the bookend of the green space, the trail coming from downtown, we're going to bookend that, have the bike racks, water fountain, hopefully a little pub there where they can refresh themselves, and then go pedestrian. And I think it's going to be a pretty cool idea to do the two little electric plug-ins that you can rent by the hour. That also may promote my living up there. I mean, you could literally pull this off by not owning a car and living in one of my apartments. It's going to be doable, so I'm committed to do those two for sure. We'll explore the rest with Brownie.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Harry, if you could just state your name for the record.
Harry Pelosi, Delphi Development.
All right, thank you very much. Council, we've asked Harry questions, and now I need a motion for us to move on. He said he wasn't ready to make one.
I'm happy to do that. I move to approve the zoning map amendment from river and commercial industrial to urban place, including the request to increase the maximum building footprint, subject to the conditions recommended by staff, and find the request is reasonable based on information provided in staff report and stated in staff recommendation. And I'm assuming that we're going to work toward achieving some of the goals that Council Member Hunt and Smith have mentioned.
Is there a second? The motion has been made in properly second. Vice Mayor, your comments?
One comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to echo my enthusiasm for this project and thank you, Harry, for endeavoring to take this on. I do think that we're seeing a transformation of the River District, and you are seriously contributing to that effort. And what's important to me, too, is that the city meet its partners in the community in that effort, and the city has a major infrastructure redevelopment plan for the River District, and in that immediate area hopes to put in the roundabout at the five-point intersection there to try to enhance the surrounding infrastructure, to do our part and to further the redevelopment of the Rad. So I'm excited that all of this seems to be coming together at the same time, and I know that there are concerns about the flavor of the River Arts District and the ability for the River Arts District to continue to support our artists, which is important, too. So as all of these projects move forward, that's a consideration that's important to me as well. But thank you for doing this, and I'm very excited and I look forward to it.
Councilman Smith.
As we're looking at this big project and thinking about the future of the River District in general, this, some of this happened with New Belgium and some of it's happening with what Mr. Pelosi is bringing, and our River Arts District Transportation Improvement Program is another big investment and another big change to the River District. I think that all of us being able to keep our eye on some of these broader values that we've expressed through our community goals around making sure that our neighborhoods are mixed income going forward and mixed use and some of these things that have been proven successes in other cities in the country as well as parts of our own, and recognizing that we've, mountain housing has created a lot of great affordable housing down in that area, sixty units at Depot Street and twenty-two coming at the Glen Rock and the Klingman Lofts up the street and Merritt Park even further, an older project. And so I think going forward, that as long as we can really establish kind of that healthy blend that will do well, I think that if everything that goes down there ends up being that higher market stuff, then we'll be headed in the wrong direction.
Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The motion carries unanimously. Counsel, this is the time we take our break, but we have a closed session. Mr. Jackson.
Yeah, I'd like to make a couple of punctuation points on this, if you could.
We're still in session.
Yeah, and I think it goes to the comments that were made and some direction from council. I think it's real important to get this on the record as well. I appreciate the vote in the direction from council. In terms of the commitment to the redevelopment of the River Arts District, I think it's important to say that significant city investment has been made in the infrastructure, taking out Blight Ice House, restoration of the Smoke Stack there is underway at this point. We're deep into the Rad tip planning project, that's a twenty-five million dollar public investment which is helping to spur and support this and other development projects. We are, in terms of the Depot Street parking that was mentioned earlier, the promise to do that, counsel, you have funded that in this year's paving budget and transportation parking budget. We are waiting on the railroad for approval of those parking spaces on Depot that would create thirty-four parking spaces. Once we get the railroad's approval, we hope to be able to install those later this spring. And finally, in terms of the land use incentive grant, the action tonight bolsters the application that Mr. Pelosi would make. You know, that's based, it's an incentive grant that you all have created, the council's created, to invest in green, sustainable workforce housing and affordable housing. And the level of the grant is based upon the level of investment that would be made in those number of units. So we look forward to receiving and working with Mr. Pelosi to bring that to fruition and bring that back to you as soon as possible.
Hey, a quick question on the repaving in the parking spaces. What would be the timing of the new roundabout at the five-way intersection? Is that more like three, five years down the road, or is that in the current?
It's not in the current fiscal year. The planning would be done, and I don't know off the top of my head the exact timing of that, but that's not this spring. The design and the feasibility of it should be completed by the end of spring.
It would interface with the corner of this development, so.
Yes.
Kind of thinking about the design and integration of that would be.
We, I'm glad you mentioned that. Part of that planning process is not just engineering, we want to work with not only Mr. Pelosi, but all the existing adjacent property owners to make sure that we plan not only the best design, but also the best timing in the sequence of events there. And that's also DOT funded, so Department of Transportation will also be a partner we'll work with closely. And we'll post the information as that progresses.
A lot of names and projects were highlighted, and I think we would be remiss in not mentioning that the investment in the River District is made possible on the shoulders and the backs of others who started that work before the city stepped in. And the artists who took a step into making those investments, I think it's critical to talk about their investment before the city put in large amounts of money and committed money. I think we've already talked about mountain housing, but I think Riverlink, I mean, they've done a yeoman's task of cleaning it up, getting investment, getting partners, getting volunteers, making our river cool again. Hetty Fisher, Progress Energy, Gail and Brian MacArthur, those are individuals and entities who made investments in the river. I know that Progress Energy took away a million tons of dirt, burnt it, cleaned it, and brought it back and then gave us the land, and it's clean. And so it's important that as we're thanking people and acknowledging people, if we start leaving people out, I don't want to lose our partners going forward. And we've had the artists who've made those large investments and those business owners who stood shoulder to shoulder together saying, this will be an artist's district that will not only be the apple of Asheville's eye and the envy for Asheville, but all of the country. And so I just want to make sure we're thanking them as well, and so thank you for those investments. Now, let's take a few minutes.
I'm there. I move that Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reason. One, to consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved. Statutory authorization is contained in General Statute 143-318.11A3.
All right.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Counsel, we have a room full of people who didn't move, and we're almost through with our agenda, so that means that they are ready for the other part of our agenda. So that means let's just take a fifteen-minute break, we only have one closed session, and let's come right back. And so Maggie, keep us on time because we have so many people who are waiting, and so we're going to take a fifteen-minute break and come back. Thank you for your patience. I would like to call the Asheville City Council meeting back to order. The next item that's on our printed agenda is the public hearing to consider a conditional zoning of property located at 329 Rockwood Road from Highway Business District to Highway Business District conditional zoning for a Holiday Inn Express and Suites, including a modification request to the building height standards. And I believe we need a motion to recuse the vice mayor first.
Move to recuse the vice mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Ms. Fields, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor Bellamy, members of council. This, as you indicated, is a conditional zoning request for property at 329 Rockwood Road. The request is to rezone that property to HBCZ from HB, Highway Business, to allow for the construction of a hotel on approximately a two-acre parcel there at 329 Rockwood Road. Here is Rockwood Road, as you're coming off of Airport Road, which is down this way. This is the, I think it's Lone Star Restaurant, and this is the Shops at Rockwood, and this is the parcel in question. And of course, this is like the Best Buy and Target, et cetera, shopping center there. And of course, this is like the Best Buy and Target, et cetera, shopping center there. The proposal... What's that? The proposal is for a seven-story hotel, Holiday Inn and Suites, with a roof-level space and deck, 100 rooms total in the hotel. Proposed gross floor area of 60,474 square feet and a height of 82 feet 8 inches, and the height is the reason for the conditional zoning request because the height allowance in Highway Business is 60 feet. Access to the hotel, you can see here, is off of Rockwood Road. This is a shared drive with the restaurant here, so there won't be another curb cut. This driveway will service both those properties. There is a light at the Rockwood Road intersection with Airport Road, which will facilitate traffic flow. There are 97 parking spaces provided on this particular piece of property. All city standards and regulations can be met, except, of course, that height modification that they're requesting. And if you look at the height, I can't get this right today. The height per our ordinance is 82 feet 8 inches, but it's only this small portion of livable space that pushes it up that high. To this level, it is 72 feet 8 inches, and it's just this outdoor roof-level deck meeting space, whatever, that pushes it up to that 82 feet 8-inch level. They have requested a determination of no hazard to air navigation from the FAA, which is something that we require in that area. There was a recent courtyard, Marriott Courtyard, that was approved in that area. It was a Level 2, so it didn't need to come to you. They had to get that same determination. It's across the street, and they were able to receive it, so we don't anticipate problems, but because of the sequester, the FAA wasn't producing paperwork, so these folks are still waiting on that determination. Couple other points to note. This development did receive approval from Buckingham County previously in 2010, but that approval has expired. At that time, the property in question was zoned employment under the county zoning ordinance, which allows a height of up to 90 feet. And the property actually right across the street here that is in the county is zoned employment, which allows 90 feet in height. Several other properties in the vicinity besides the one that I just pointed out are zoned employment by the county. Staff is supportive of this request, and we feel that is in keeping with the city goals. While the structure is tall for the area, it's at a regional node, and as I indicated, other zoning in the area, whether it be the county employment, but there's some city's commercial industrial zoning which allows for 80 feet and regional business as well in that area. We've received no calls or comments on this. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended it to you unanimously with, of course, the height modification. And that completes my presentation.
Thank you so very much. We'll open the public hearing to public comment. First hearing from a representative from the developer, or the developer himself.
My name's Justin Church. I'm the civil engineer for the project with Blue Ridge Environmental, and I just want to say that staff's done a great job of shepherding us through the process to get us here, and I'm really just here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Any other members of the community wishing to address council on any of the items related to this public hearing? Seeing no one move forward, we close the public hearing to public comment. Questions, comments, or a motion from council?
Mayor, I move to approve the zoning map amendment from Highway Business to Highway Business Conditional Zoning with a height modification of 22 feet 8 inches pending FAA approval and subject to the conditions recommended by staff and all standard conditions. I find that this request is reasonable and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans based on information provided in the staff report and as stated in the staff recommendation.
Second.
The motion has been made in properly second. Any additional comments from council? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The motion carries unanimously. Counsel, the next public hearing is item D, the public hearing to consider an amendment to conditional zoning on property located at 919 Haywood Road for the construction of Haywood Village. No?
You may want to get Councilman Mannheim.
All right. Mr. Groans, welcome. You will make the presentation, then I'll open the public hearing to public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of city council, members of the public. Asking for you to consider an amendment to the approved plans for 919 Haywood Road as an urban place conditional zone. The project that is currently on file was approved by city council in August of 2007. This is an amendment to that plan. The site is located along Haywood Road. It's the former site of the St. Joan of Arc Catholic Church, if some of you remember that a few years back. This is Mitchell Avenue, and this is Blue Ridge Avenue. This is just another aerial view. The project got started and what was completed was one building and the existing parking for that first property as well. This is the site plan that was approved in 2007. That project was approved for 56 residential units, and these mixed-use buildings, mixed-use buildings across the front with residential structures in the back. These were taller three-story buildings here with smaller-scale residential units that kind of blended into the residential fabric. There was also 10,000 square feet of commercial space. Work began, and the structure was constructed and addressed as 915 Haywood Road. The first phase of surface parking was also completed. In early 2007, the developer, Mr. Roger Page, died, and the family members have had the property for sale since then. With such a catastrophic loss, a lot of folks might have just walked away from a project like this, but this family didn't. They maintained it and have been seeking someone else to take over, so we're glad to see someone do that with this development. The modifications of this new plan reflect the conditions of 2013. But the earlier plans started really in 2005 and 2006. In 2006, a five-day charrette was held in the community. 100 people came. It developed the components of the plan that was later approved in 2007, namely that the mixed-use buildings would front along Haywood Road, and there would be a circulation pattern that would kind of be internal to the site with two existing driveways with the residential units kind of blending back into the neighborhood fabric, so it would be sort of a seamless proposal. In 2007, that original project that was approved in 2006 was not able to be completed. The developer at the time came back with the 56 residential units, 10,000 square feet of commercial space, which is very similar to that original layout. The current proposal that we're considering tonight is... Here, I'll orient you one more time. This is Haywood Road here. This is the existing building that has been completed, and these are proposed mixed-use structures along Haywood Road. The existing driveways are still going to be proposed and used. The circulation pattern still centers the center of the lot. There's larger residential buildings here and smaller-scale single-family duplexes lining those edge streets. What is proposed today is 75 residential units and 4,800 square feet of commercial space. That is slightly higher than the 56 units approved in 2007, but it's a reduction in the commercial space from 10,000 down to the 4,800. The commercial space in the current proposal will be on the ground floor corner of the new building proposed at Mitchell Avenue on this side here, and there's the existing floor area of that original building also counting into that 4,800 square feet. 15 residential units are proposed on the upper two floors of the mixed-use building, and there are seven units already in that existing building. This is the elevation of the building along Haywood. This is the completed structure, and these are the proposed new buildings here. They'll be connected by a bridge over space between the two buildings. Behind Haywood Road, the plan will follow that same general layout for circulation. In addition to those units, 36 residential units in the center of the site, there are 107 parking spaces that line the ring of the property throughout the center there. This is all through here, and in this existing parking area here, there's additional tent spaces along Haywood. The scale of those other buildings will be in a similar vein as what has been built at SkyLofts. SkyLofts, came back to you all, and the same developer is bringing this proposal forward now. This will be three structures of this type with 36 residential units, and the single-family and duplexes that are on the outside of the property will... This is an elevation of the front that faces Mitchell Avenue and Blue Ridge Avenue for the single units and duplex units. This is another elevation here. All the scale of the structures, the building heights are all within the allowances of Urban Place District. The parking fits well within the Urban Place District guidelines. We did have a technical review committee meeting. Most of the items were fairly simple, and the issues were fairly simple and easy to address. We have some outstanding issues to make sure that there's at least a 10-foot wide sidewalk along Haywood Road to complete that sidewalk there. We're working on a few details there. Some variances that were approved in the 2007 plan will carry forward, and that includes a property line buffer at the residential edge, and at that time it was approved to be 15 feet back here. At the neighborhood request, there was a desire not to have a fence and kind of fence this off from the rest of the neighborhood, so we're carrying that forward. The sidewalk widths along Mitchell Avenue and Blue Ridge Avenue will be sort of a residentially scaled at six feet, and that was kind of approved at the last plan. We want to carry that forward. There are existing trees and right-of-way constraints to make it any wider, and the rest of the variances that will carry forward deal with the orientation and design of the buildings, and so the residential setbacks are expanded in places along the side streets. The building orientation of the center buildings will focus on their access internal road instead of the external of the site, and that reductions in window openings is consistent with residential buildings and not mixed-use buildings. The mixed-use buildings along Haywood Road will meet all those standards for urban place. The project was reviewed for consistency with the conditional zoning findings, and staff found that they seemed to meet all of those conditional zoning findings. They're optional for a conditional zone project. I will point out that transit does pass directly by this property, and two other service lines go nearby. The project through the 2007 approval will provide a transit shelter along Haywood Road. Fire and police stations are located a few hundred feet really away from here across the street, and there is a neighborhood park behind the firehouse. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval unanimously, 5-0, in support of this Staff reviewed the proposal, the changes to the proposal with the comprehensive plan and feel like it's still met. The comprehensive plan encourages infill projects of higher density with commercial spaces along commercial corridors where the infrastructure's in place to support it. Also, the comprehensive plan recognizes and encourages a developer-led, community-buy-in type of process, and that was happening in 2006. A lot of those components, as I pointed out, still carry forward with this change. Staff feels that the project also meets city council goals and vision plan considerations in that economic growth and fiscal stability are goals of the vision plan, and that this mixed-use development on a multimodal transportation corridor helps create an environment where citizens and businesses want to live, work, and invest. We also feel that the project meets the community development goal of the affordable housing and community development goals of the vision plan because this project provides a range of unit sizes and types, so there will be ADA-accessible units in the multifamily buildings, also single-family-style units to suit a variety of incomes, life stages, and abilities, all in one place. I think that, working with Haywood Road like I have for all these years, one of the concerns I did hear from a number of folks over the years has been this unfinished project, and I think this is something that's going to get us off of the square one and move ahead with a new development, so we're happy about that. And so that concludes my comments in the staff report, and I can answer any questions if you have any.
All right. Thank you very much. We will open the public hearing to public comment at this time. We're going to open the public hearing first.
Well, first, okay.
And first, having from a representative from the development. Yes, sir, if you could come forward, state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mayor Bellamy, members of council. My name is Robert Todd. I represent Red House Architecture. We are the designers of this project. With me this evening and available to answer questions, sorry, is John Cannard and Mark Brooks. They are the site designers, and we also have Rick Gardner here, who is on behalf of the developer, as well as Jim Diaz, who is a Realtor and more for this project. He is representing the owner's interest in this as they try to transition this out. So again, thank you, Alan, for that great presentation. For the sake of brevity, I won't go into too much detail on this. If you have questions, please let us know. We're certainly excited to be a part of resuscitating this project. It had been not necessarily flatlining because there were occupants and owners within this single building, but it certainly was sitting underutilized. The developer has brought SkyLofts back to life, if you're familiar with that project, and I know folks are excited to begin moving into there as well. I did want to pause to offer a compliment and just sort of... Just say that we notice from a designer as well as a developer myself, the planning staff as well as development services staff has really come together in recent years to make this process of assessing out whether a developer can move forward with the project and meet the goals of the city's master plans and the different goals of our other committees within the city. That process has become smoother. I did not think that I would live long enough to say that the UDO is beginning to work as it was anticipated and planned, but thank you, Judy Daniels. I know she's got a great staff. So I just want to relay that from more from the private side of development, and this project, the RAD Lofts, prior to that, that process has become a lot more clean, I should say. And to that point, we had a neighborhood community meeting. We had good neighborhood participation at the P&amp;Z. I don't know... I know that we've got one owner tonight that may speak, but this has been a good collaborative process. I'll say that. So we're excited to be a part of it. Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Todd. Thank you. Yes, sir. Nick, just state your name.
Good evening. My name is Richard Rispert, and I live approximately a 15-minute walk from this project, and I see it frequently. I just have two concerns that I wanted to mention that came up, sort of discovering that this was going on. I guess first, since we like to thank people around here a lot, I am excited that this little ghost town area in my neighborhood is actually going to get developed. Whenever I see development go up along this corridor on Haywood, however, I'm always really concerned that anything new that we're doing doesn't make it harder to put in bike lanes in the future, as in that 35 mile-per-hour section of Haywood is a little more dangerous on one's bicycle than the other area around there, and I just hope that that's being considered when you guys think about sidewalks and the front there. And the other is, you mentioned that you were decreasing the amount of square footage for commercial space in the front, and if you actually live in that area and you bike and walk and drive along there a lot, Haywood Street really feels, as it's happening now, much more like a commercial space, and we're all very excited about the new restaurants and businesses and stores that open up there. So I was just a little curious about reducing the amount of commercial footprint that's directly on Haywood when you've got all of that residential space behind, when I know as one of the residents, we're really hungry to have more commercial space that's right there on Haywood. And as are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I think just from the design, and Mr. Todd, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the commercial frontage still exists, it's just not as much as it would have been. So it's still there, but they're putting more investment in the residential component. And so in light of Mr. Smith's comments earlier, it's one of those things, do we want more affordable units or do we want more commercial space? And I think it sounds like more affordable units are going to come online.
And if I can just speak to that, I think that's a great point that you have, and what we looked at from the developer's standpoint is, at this time, the commercial space, we're going to take a portion of the remaining commercial space that was approved prior, let that be live-work space in this sort of transition period, so that maybe from an affordability standpoint, you can have a home office, have it be on a commercial quarter, but you can actually live upstairs or within that unit. And then we could see that could potentially transition five years to... And then we could see that could potentially transition five years, 10 years from now as it becomes more dense, so it allows that flexibility. But that intent is still there.
All right. I think we got a thumbs up from a 15-minute-walk neighbor. Okay. Yes, ma'am? If you could state your name for the record.
Good evening, council. My name is Jen Swerington. I am the owner of a business that's in the current building. I want to point to it, but I'm in the building that's already there, that I purchased commercial space in 2010. I'm an artist and designer. I actually was in the River Arts District for six years and wanted to buy my space and was able to move up to West Asheville to do that. And I do own my property outright, and I make my work in there every day. And for the past three years that I've owned it, ever since I got the CO, it's basically been me, my neighbor who's my accountant, and a big field, and a lot of people asking, what's going on in there? And a lot of people ask, do you have a lot of walk-in traffic? And actually, I don't. I do have a storefront. I have a beautiful dress forum in the window. A lot of people know my work that way from being there, but it's primarily my studio where I work, and it does have that ghost town feel to it. There is a bus stop right in front and businesses on the periphery, but right around me, there's not much going on. So I would love to see the development restart. I'd love to see the vitality reignite, and I'd love to have neighbors who are creative and doing like what I'm doing. And that's not just happening in the River Arts District, but also in West Asheville. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to address council on this issue? All right, we'll close the public hearing to public comment. Any questions, comment, or motion from council? Councilor Pelley.
Just a question. I'm sorry if I don't understand this here, but I don't know yet, is this, are we talking about rental housing or owner-occupied?
These are rental units.
And follow-up, Mr. Gullins. I heard you say that there's a range of unit costs, but I didn't, it wasn't clear if any of those met the definition of affordable housing.
From my understanding, with the developer, talking to the developer, it would be workforce-priced housing will not be affordable from the city standard.
Mr. Todd, could you kind of break that down a little more with any more details for us around unit costs and what we're looking at there as far as that range goes?
I would probably have to rely on the developer for that, but there is not an official affordable housing component to this development, either originally or being presented this evening. So it is, I guess it would be considered workforce housing as far as from a pricing standpoint. I do think that the live-work space, and I think live-work is not exactly defined as far as from an affordability standpoint, but certainly being able to conduct your business and under your roof in which you live is, make that more accessible to other small businesses that might otherwise have to have two separate spaces. So I would like to recognize that there are five of those units down there on that lower floor. I think the other component here to think of, which makes this development fairly unique in the city, is that we've got the three-story urban front sort of face to the development. And then as we go back, we've got duplexes and single cottages, which should allow a bit more flexibility as opposed to staying in what a lot of our affordable housing components are currently, or the new ones being more from an apartment standpoint. The cottages seem to have a little bit more of a single-family feel to it, or at least that's the intent. So I think that that's going to open up to a wider range of folks that might otherwise be able to afford an apartment, maybe they can get a cottage here.
And thank you for that, and I'd certainly appreciate this project being resuscitated, and it has been a hole in the ground. My office is in the Bloodsoe Building there in close proximity, so I'm aware of kind of the feel of that part of Haywood Road. I wonder how amenable the developers would be to including that affordable housing component?
That would be a question for the developer directly, and I think it could be something that, I think it was, has been discussed, but I'd have to rely on him to sort of bring his numbers forward and see. I would encourage MHO to find a spot, a larger spot on West Asheville, since we like for MHOs, you know, we appreciate MHO's development. So unfortunately, at this time, I don't know of a spot out on Haywood Road where it could be a new project.
Is the developer or someone who could speak to that available?
Let me see if, Rick is more knowledgeable on the construction end of things, and I'm not sure. Let me step back and see. Rick, can you speak on the affordability?
Thank you. Hi there. Rick Goddard with PR Contractors. We did the Skylowf development, and we will be hopefully doing this development here. An answer to your question would be for the developer himself. I do not know what his intent is, you know, price-wise, price point on these units themselves. So I'm sorry, I'm not really able to help you out there.
Well, and part of this discussion tonight would be around conditions of the project, and I certainly want to be able to work with the developer to try to make sure that we can maximize the city goals around affordable housing without becoming too onerous to the project itself. So as far as being able to clarify that, how would you suggest moving forward?
I guess we would have to have a meeting. We'd have to ask the developer himself, his intent, to see if this is actually affordable, something to be, you know, that he would be able to afford to do, you know, without subsidies or anything like that.
I understand. So if council is open to it, I might look to have some further conversations with the developer around the affordability piece before moving forward.
This is a project that has been delayed in this community for years, and it sounds like that the size of the units, the workforce housing price, so it may not be the subsidy level that we're accustomed to for people at 30% of the median income in that range, but I don't think we should hold up the project for that process.
Mayor, I think affordable housing is important to all of us, and frankly, as one of those 100 people that was there at the original charrette, this is going to provide some good housing. And it's a field that has lay fall for a long time. There've been an awful lot of people over the years who've been very unhappy that that's been left in the situation it's in. Nice one building, but it's not come close to, at this point, what the intent of a lot of people in that neighborhood put together. This one reflects that intent, and I think that, I would agree with the mayor, I think that this is a great opportunity to move forward. It's a shame that the developer or the owner's not here this evening, but with the size, the cottage size, I'm supportive of it at this point.
Is it a motion?
Mayor? Well, like Councilman Smith, I do think, I think like all of us, that we all agree that consideration of providing some level of affordable housing is important. And I guess looking towards the future, that perhaps we need to be considering ways to make this part of the kind of the checklist, so to speak, so that this is not something that is sprung on developers at the last moment here. But I agree that, you know, we all have a part to play in addressing the affordable housing needs of our community here. And although I support this tonight, I do hope that in the future, as a council, we can make this sort of a front-end question rather than a back-end question.
I respect that, and I understand where you want to go, but doing it right now at the end, when it's time for approval, I think that's wrong. And holding people over a bell, changing the process, if this was talked about months ago when they were coming to meet with the staff and saying, as part of this process, you have to, you must include, not may or have an opportunity. But you can't do that at the back end. And the developer sent representatives here to deal with what he thought would be approved properly. He didn't think he had to be here, so I don't want to be sending disparaging remarks about the developer. I don't know who it is. I'm just saying. But you're doing it at the back end, and it is not a policy for them to have to put in affordable housing. As one of the strongest affordable housing advocates for years, you don't do it at the back end with the stick. You do it at the front end with the carrot. If we look at most of the affordable housing that has been created, the city has played a part in that. And you're doing it at the back end without our part in the process. And so trying to makeshift and go have a conversation without that process being in place is not good policy, is not good form. And so if the next council, after December 3rd, want it to be a mandatory affordable housing in every development, that's the policy. But until that, it's not in place unless they're getting a subsidy bonus.
And that's exactly the point I was trying to make, is that, I agree. I'm prepared to vote to move this project forward, but in the future, that this needs to be a consideration.
And future council can deal with that. We'll leave that up to future council.
One more comment. So just, I mean, this is a pretty exciting night. There's all these building projects coming forward. We've come out of this great recession where everyone's been kind of waiting for this to kick back up, and I think that we're all pretty excited to see projects like this one come forward. I would like to point out that of the 435 units that we're going to be approving tonight, we only have 14 guaranteed affordables out of 435. One of our city council adopted strategic goals is around the creation of more affordable housing. And I, these developers look like they're really intent on doing a fantastic job here, and I assume nothing but the best of intentions from this group. All I'm suggesting is that the conversation happen. I understand a three-week delay can be problematic, and I do not intend to create undue difficulties. However, we have a stated need and an apparent affordable housing crisis, and we need every unit we can get. So if we can't hold back on doing, on having that conversation and hold back on this approval for three weeks, I won't be able to be supportive tonight.
And I want to be clear that I understand the need for affordable housing. Since 2005, we've done over almost 3,000 units of new affordable housing. But the thing about it is, the city has hugely played a part in that. And what, you're holding back a decision based upon something that's not even on the table for consideration for that person. It's not fair for that developer to have his development not get full consideration because of a rule that comes at the last end of the decision-making process. And while you're free to make your decisions on whatever you choose to, it's wrong to send a message to developer to say, I can change the rules at the end, won't hold, give you my support because of what I believe at the end that you didn't know about. And so did we meet with the developer and say, we want this? And he said, no? We didn't. And I just think if you're going to change rules, do it at the front end so that they'll know and can prepare for it, and not at the back end at the very moment that we're about to make a decision. And then that comes in with our budget. How much are we willing to help subsidize? Because there is a subsidy between what the people can afford as a developer and what needs to be met to make that affordable. And so it's not just a conversation of will you include it, it's how are they going to be able to afford it and make it work for the rest of the project? But it didn't work without some funding. And so you're saying, I want to prove it if you don't put the money up to make it happen, and it's not fair to him? If he's, this is the seventh, this is the ninth hour, and you're changing the rules of the game in the ninth hour.
Thank you, mayor. I understand this to be a conditional zoning process and that it's within, it's within the process to be able to bring up these type of concerns. And as I stated before, I certainly don't intend to create any onerous requirements for the developer. As we saw with an earlier development group, they willingly came forward and altered their plan to include more affordable units because they saw, hey, you know, we've got some community goals here. So I'm optimistic that given more time, we could get, we could at least have the conversation. But I understand your perspective, and I understand the vote that you'll be making.
All right. There's no motion on the floor. And if there's no motion made, the project will fail because of a lack of emotion.
I think we've heard three members of council express willingness to move this forward tonight, if I listened properly. And Lord and I, you know, I spoke out on the Radlof development and felt that, given the circumstance there, where the developer in good faith had worked with staff and through our TRC and P&amp;Z, got here to this point, feeling like there had been a full negotiation. And perhaps there are ways to work with this particular developer over the next few weeks. I don't know if a land use incentive grant could be in play for this one as well, just like we discussed at Radlof. But I tend to agree that we need to get better between council and staff at parameters for advancing projects, and that might include changing ordinances in a way to make that happen. So I'm prepared to make a motion to move this forward, and I'll do that now. I move to approve the amendment to the approved development plans for Haywood Village, subject to conditions recommended by staff, and found the request is reasonable based on information provided in the staff report and is stated in the staff recommendation.
Second?
And for the questions or comments? Councilman Smith?
Yeah, I'll just make one more comment, and that is that I think that our development of the density bonus was an example of attempting to invite developers to create affordable housing, and that seems to me to be the way we need to go. Unless there's a conditional use that we really have a hinge on, mostly what we want to do is encourage private landowners and private developers to create the affordable component. But we don't have a whole lot of leverage in terms of demanding what private developers do. There are pretty strict provisions about property rights. So I hope we can find better incentives to encourage people going forward as part of the conversation that both of you have mentioned, but I will second, was it seconded already? I'll second it.
All right.
Second, second.
Any further questions or comments from council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose like sign. The motion carries 6 to 1. Council, we have one more public hearing, and it's public hearing E. The public hearing to consider an amendment to Section 7-11-4C of the Unified Development Ordinance to Review Open Space Requirements for Industrial Projects in the Industrial District and Commercial Industrial District. Ms. Daniels.
Mayor, council, nice to see you public. I'll be brief. This is the last of a series of changes to the UDO that I've been bringing before y'all in the Planning Commission during the summer and fall. Actually, the first part of this industrial segment you heard in June and approved, it was changes to process. This element would reduce the open space requirement for industrial uses only. It would eliminate it for industrial uses in the industrial zone, and it would reduce it from 15% to 5% in the commercial industrial zone. These are, represent, industrial properties are less than 1% of the land area in the city, and the commercial industrial are less than around 6% of the land area, and shrinking. We are getting with this increase in development activity more interested in converting these. Staff has come to believe these are very important parts of our economic development goals, and they provide high-paying jobs. And we have come to believe that this open space requirement, which is primarily geared around suburban-style development, is perhaps stronger than it should be in order to preserve that, these as an incentive to attract industrial uses. The open space requirements would be retained for any other uses in these districts. The, a significant portion of those properties already have businesses on them. If you'll notice in the map, the green ones are the commercial industrial, the purple are the industrial, and the crosshatched ones in both are in public ownership. And so we don't even get tax revenue off of those. So in looking at your goals and both in the master plan, the 2025 plan, and in your strategic operating plans, economic development is a crucial part of the city going forward. The staff has, in addition, I forgot to mention, this would also clear up a discrepancy in the industrial zone. It already states that the, there shall be no open space requirement in the industrial, for industrial uses, and yet in the open space requirements, another part of the UDO, it requires it. UDO, we're trying yet, in the open space requirements, another part of the UDO, it requires it. UDO, trying to improve it, there are discrepancies there. So this would clear this up one way or the other. Staff took this to the Planning Commission in June, and they thought it would be a good idea to go to the Sustainable Committee for Energy and the Environment to get additional information on it. We did that, and actually, they wound up talking about over three different sessions. Ultimately, they recommended approval of it at their meeting last week unanimously with a request that perhaps you asked staff to continue looking for ways that we could address ongoing concerns like loss of tree cover, impervious surface, through other means other than the open space requirement, and bring those back to you as we continue evolve zoning requirements. The Planning Commission looked at this twice, and then at a meeting with only four present, voted two to two to support it, which means they did not support it on a two-to-two vote. And so it comes to you with that recommendation with the Planning Commission. Staff continues to believe this is an important, would be helpful in our long-range economic development goals, and we recommend approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. We're opening up to public comment from the community. Anyone wishing to address council on this particular issue? Okay, that means we've got people waiting for other issues on the agenda. All right, so, council, we're going to close the public hearing to public comment. Questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The motion carries unanimously. Next, we have the discussion on the chairmanship of the Civil Service Board, and Councilman Hunt will lead that discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Bellamy. We have, we've discussed this twice in open session, and this is the, sort of the final resolution. Essentially, the Civil Service Board is the one board and commission where council appoints the chairperson. And about three months ago, we appointed a chairman to it without really a process to entertain applications or expressions of interest. In fact, the chairman wasn't even aware he was about to be appointed. His name is Marv Rosen, and we did it. And so I felt that, and there were concerns expressed on the part of the Civil Service Board members, that they were taken off guard and didn't feel like there was a full and complete process. So I worked with the folks on the board and with the city clerk, Maggie Burleson, and we instituted a process to gather expressions of interest from the Civil Service Board members. Mr. Rosen is the one person that applied. So now I think we've fulfilled that fair, open process that we sort of owed the group and ourselves to start with. And the resolution tonight would be to confirm the appointment of Mr. Rosen until June 25th, 2014, or until his successor is appointed, whichever occurs first.
So I moved.
That is my motion.
Oh, you made it.
I'll second it. You moved it, I second it.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Any member of the community wishing to address council on this issue? All right. Any further questions or comments from council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The motion carries unanimously. Council, we're going to move swiftly to a new business. Item A, the ordinance repealing Section 16-39 of the Code of Ordinances to eliminate exclusions to the street cut permit requirements for cutting into the city's right of way. David Foster is going to make the presentation. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Bellamy, members of council. What we've got before you is an ordinance amendment eliminating Chapter 1639. And what it is, is basically, there's three exclusions that are allowed for in the street cut process. One is for buried service lines perpendicular to a street resulting in a trench width of six inches or less that does not involve cutting the sidewalk. The second one is pole replacement removals, which don't involve cutting the sidewalk street or other street ordinances. And the third one is installation of replacement poles. But what we're running into, and it's not, is that some utilities and private companies are either taking advantage or some ignorances, and then on the enforcement side, we don't really have consistent application of the other ordinances, and we have some of these exclusions out there. I do have some examples that I can show really, really quickly. Is that, in the first instance, what the intent was, is that we really wanted someone to be able to cut a narrow trench underneath the sidewalk, not really impact the right-of-way. What we end up, it's not typical, but it's indicative of what we run into trying to enforce it, is that we'll take an excavator and they'll dig a really long trench through an entire neighborhood, and then the exclusion is there for them, but the harm can be great. The next instance is where we have a pole replacement, where it doesn't really involve cutting the sidewalk. And the intent was, is to put it off of the street, away from where we put a sidewalk, and not really impact the public's use of that right-of-way. And what we get is either a pole farm, or it's placed in a manner such that we can't install infrastructure in the future, should we choose. And the third instance is the one that is, where we have an accident or an incident that damages the pole. The intent was, is that the utility owning the pole will be able to come in following an accident and replace the pole and restore service immediately. What we end up with, unfortunately, is the case where we get multiple poles placed in the same trench, and because they have joint use, the vacant pole usually sits there for a long time. The intent is not to punish or harm or alter the response process. We can still allow for emergency permits to allow the restoration of services through an after-hours notification. But what we really want to do is be consistent in how we apply the policies. And the third thing is make sure that we can maximize the public safety by knowing what else is going in the right-of-way and being able to govern and regulate that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Foster. Council, this is not a public hearing, and so I need a motion before I open it up for public comment. So any questions, comments, or motion?
I'll make the motion. This is, I actually attended a meeting recently with some folks out in the Five Points area, and we walked behind the new Harris teeter. And that's a good example, pole after pole there, the utility company has come in and put a new pole and left the old pole right next to it, using our current exemption, which doesn't require obtaining a permit. And the idea here is that now they'll have to get a permit for each of these replacements, so the city can be aware it's happening, catch it, and make sure we're not going to be leaving. What do you call them? Pole farms?
Yeah.
Pole farms.
Yeah, and what we want to do is, the ordinance is set to give at least a 90-day notice. So we want to work with all the utilities and go ahead and identify all those places where those are now, and kind of work with them to bring them into compliance, and then start the enforcement. We don't want to, you know, be punitive in trying to get this thing corrected.
That was my motion.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Any member of the community wishing to address council on this particular issue? All right, council, any further questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The motion carries unanimously. Council, the next item is item B, consideration of granting a waiver of the sidewalk requirement, including the fee in lieu of construction option for the Gaya condominium project located at 141 Shelburne Road. Ken Putnam will make the presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Ken Putnam, and I'm the Transportation Department Director. This project has been, in going on for many years. It first started coming through the system in 2006, and it started off well. It's a small project, has 15 total units, and they're all occupied now. About the year 2009, the contractor did come to the city and ask if he could, instead of building the sidewalk that was approved on the site plan, if he could pay the fee in lieu of, instead. And we looked at it, and since it was not identified as a needed linkage, we granted that permission, gave him the amount of the fee. And then construction continued. Unfortunately, this developer went bankrupt shortly thereafter. And in order for the project to move forward, because there was a lot of infrastructure that was still left undone, including some of the carports that were to go with the units, the homeowners association stepped up and assumed the responsibility to finish the infrastructure. And now it's getting to the point where, again, they're all occupied, and the owners of those units are even struggling keeping up with their own needs with their homeowners' dues. And so what they've asked, instead of having this burden on them, they're asking if they can just have the complete waiver of the sidewalk requirement, including paying any fee. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions. And there are members from the legal department here that can help, too.
All right, Mr. Putnam, council, questions, comments, or a motion? Have to have something from the council.
I just want to make sure I understand. I know that PED had a lot more time with this. So the homeowners purchased their homes, the, and, you know, COs were provided, and they were good to go. Developer went under, homeowners, in order to not get stuck with additional site requirements, chose to sign on to this, because that could have been a great cost as well. And, and that's the position we're in now? Are those roughly the steps? Is there anything?
Yes, sir, that's exactly right. If they had chosen not to assume that responsibility, then the entire project would have been subject to be coming under the new requirements for the new year, wherever that was, like 2010 and so forth.
Thank you.
Council, any questions, comments, or a motion?
I move to approve a resolution granting a waiver of the sidewalk requirement, including the fee in lieu of construction option for the Gaya condominium project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Any member of the community wishing to address council on this particular issue? All right, council, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
No.
The motion carries five to two.
Hold on a second.
All right. Next is item C, the resolution endorsing the protection of civil liberties of all citizens. And Councilman Bothwell, this is your issue.
Sure. This represents the culmination of a long effort by members of the community here. To take you back in history a little bit, when, with the passage of the USA Patriot Act by the Congress in very short order following 9/11, with very little consideration of its impact on civil liberties in the United States, a number of municipalities across the United States began to take action to express their discontent, to make it clear that they disagreed with the elements of the USA Patriot Act, which seemed to encroach on our rights, on human rights, on our rights under the US Constitution. A number of cities across the country in ensuing years have passed resolutions concerning, or even ordinances concerning enforcement of those provisions, and making it clear that their cities supported the Bill of Rights. Other elements that could come into play here are, many of you have heard of the notion of driving while black, that there's an impression by many people who are non-white, that the police differentially enforce against them, driving while brown, the same sort of thing. And there's also a strong impression in our immigrant communities that there's enforcement against them, that there's preferential traffic stops, for instance. And coupled with that, I read along the way that the National Organization of Police Chiefs has been very, very clear that they do not want to be saddled with enforcing federal immigration law. Because when a city police force enforces immigration law, or is thought to, immigrant communities don't report crimes, because they're afraid of the possible enforcement level there, that there might be some tie-in between the local and the federal. So, over the last three and a half years, I promised I would work on this when I ran for office in 2009. And over the last three and a half years, I've met with an interfaith group here, a number of Christian ministers, a mullah, and at least one rabbi were involved. I've met with Latino groups here in town, met with people from Occupy Asheville, talked to people with the Asheville Buncombe Community Relations Council, met with the Western North Carolina American Civil Liberties Union, and had advice from the Bill of Rights Defense Committee in Washington, DC. And along the way, among things that I learned were that a number of cities, Somerville, Massachusetts, Anchorage, Alaska, Patterson in Montclair, New Jersey, Ashland, Oregon, Arcata, California, have passed similar sorts of resolutions. And so with the advice of all these different groups, and then with the consent of the police department, the Asheville Police Department here, and with the legal department from the city of Asheville, we have fashioned this civil liberties resolution. I don't know that I need to read it, I hope most of you have, because it's been available online. The basic idea is that we're making it clear that employees of the city of Asheville, all the thousand employees, including the police department, do not discriminate against people based on race, ethnicity, gender, gender orientation, apparent wealth or lack of wealth, homed or homelessness, religion, political activity, and so forth, that our police department is not keeping records on people who are not criminals, that we're not, that our local police force is not actively enforcing immigration law, because that's not their responsibility, that's a federal responsibility. So it's sort of a basket of promises that the city of Asheville supports the Bill of Rights. That's the key, that we really do, and that we want everybody to know that. And we want it to make it public. Now, part of these things, some of these things are already embodied in the Code of Ethics for our police department. It's not that they don't do this already, but the point is to make it a very public announcement, that this is where Asheville stands. And that's why I've advanced this. It's come here via the Public Safety Committee, and it's presented here tonight. I'm hoping for approval by the city council.
All right.
I guess I would make a motion that the council approve this resolution endorsing the civil liberties resolution.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any member of the community wishing to address council on this issue, please come forward at this time. Please come forward and state your name for the record.
My name is Catherine List. I live on Von Rock Court. Not wishing to, I thank you very much for giving me this moment, not wishing to disparage any city efforts. I would like to reaffirm the commitment of the city of Asheville to assert the civil rights of all residents, regardless of ethnicity, political viewpoint, or sexual orientation. I expect the council to approve this resolution, and ask anyone present in the audience who would like to support this resolution to demonstrate that by a show of hands. Thank you very much.
So that's why y'all are here. All right.
Reverend Lisa Landis, I'm really happy that you are going to consider this and hope that you do pass it, because it's really horrible to be arrested for what I was arrested for. And I hope that other people won't have to go through that. When you're talking about the homeless, how can you have laws and then they contradict each other? So if you have the homeless, and then you have a law that says that you can't pee in public, or we're going to arrest you, how can that be, how can that be fair? I know that when I was arrested for impeding traffic, the police had the streets blocked off. How could I be arrested for impeding traffic when the police had the streets blocked off? So when you are doing these things, you have to look at all of your laws and your rules and your regulations and see, you know, really if you are doing it. I hope that you're going to get a 24-hour restroom. The restroom that was put up there in the park is really pretty nice. But people need a 24-hour restroom. If they cannot pee, then they should not be arrested for peeing in public if they have no other option. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Richard Risperger again. I'll be incredibly brief. I'll be shocked if this measure doesn't pass. It is entirely in keeping with everything about the culture of Asheville. And for all of the people that you see here now who are making it through this endurance game of a city council meeting, there are people who have already left the room that support this, and many, many other people who are unable to come to council meetings, who voice consistently their vociferous support of such measures. And I thank Cecil Bothwell for putting all that time and energy, and everybody else who's done that to make such a great resolution. Thank you.
If you come forward, state your name for the record.
My name is Mike Lanning. I'm a city resident. I support, in theory, what Cecil's trying to do. I support that. But being a retired law enforcement officer, I took an oath in 1981 under the Constitution to defend the country. under the Constitution to defend the country, and I also took a state constitutional oath in 84, 87, again, 2012, to support the North Carolina Constitution as well as the United States Constitution. So, I, I know what you're trying to say in principle, I understand that, and I, also, I don't agree with overreach of, of police or excessive force. In the 30 years I was in law enforcement, I was only investigated one time, and that was for, for use of force, and that was when I was shot. So, I was never one to abuse my powers, and most police officers do not do that. So, actually, the, if it's in the paper, what, what you're submitting is not worth enforcing. I mean, it's, it's, you've already got the Constitution, and you, you spoke about illegal immigrants, until Henderson County actually got involved in that process, if, if you had an illegal immigrant, you'd have to have a busload before they'd ever come to get them in Charlotte, from Charlotte. So, I think you need to be more educated on some of those issues like that. Again, I, I think it's, it's not worth the paper it's written on. Again, I, I support in theory, you know, you're trying to control use of force, and you're trying to control those type of issues. I don't have a problem with that, but I truly don't believe it's worth the, the paper it's written on. And the City of Fayetteville, they may have enacted a policy, I don't know if it's a resolution or a policy, but the Southern State's PBA took Fayetteville to court over that issue, or filed a motion, and, and it was over basically voluntary searches, and their council there and their chief didn't agree with that, and they tried to stop that. And this motion, when it was filed, the city decided not to proceed with it, and they stopped, and they backed away, and the officers continue doing that today. So, I appreciate the time, and thank you very much.
All right. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. If you come forward, state your name for the record.
My name is Marion Patton, and I live at 279 South French Broad, and I just wanted to, I guess, counter this gentleman. I respect him for his police service, but I have, I know too many families in this area who have been here for 15 years or more, and I know that they are often the victim of some of these stops by the police, and the, the less they have to face that, the better. They are the best people I've ever known, and I, so I, I appreciate the, the thing that Mr. Bothwell is doing, and I want to support it with all my heart. I think it's a, I think there are just too many good families in this area who have to live in fear, and it is a danger in terms of reporting crime and on, from them. So, I think it helps all of us to have this in place, and that no one feared reporting a crime.
I, I think it might be best if I just go ahead and read it. I know, Councilman Bothwell, you said you wouldn't, but everyone does not have a copy, and I think that it'd be good for people to hear what's in it, and make their own decisions. It reads, "Whereas the City of Asheville has long aspired to protect civil liberties and provide equal protection under the law to all citizens in the city, which includes a diverse population of many races, religions, national and ethnic origin, including immigrants, tourists, and students, whose contributions to the communities, contributions to the community's economy, culture, and civic character are vast and important, and affirms its strong support for the fundamental constitutional rights of every person, and recognizes that the preservation of civil liberties is essential to the well-being of a democratic society. Whereas the Chief of Police of the City of Asheville has implemented new community policing practices that seek to reframe and improve the relationship between law enforcement officers and the public. And whereas the City of Asheville opposes measures that singles out individuals within our diverse population for legal scrutiny or enforcement activity based on race, skin color, national or ethnic origin, gender, sexual orientation, mental or physical disability, religious or political opinion or activity, immigration status or homed or homeless status. And whereas the City of Asheville opposes any efforts to transfer federal immigration responsibility to state and local officials, since these proposals text are already overburdened police department and damaged relationship with immigrant communities. And whereas the City of Asheville believes that there is no inherent conflict between national security and the preservation of liberty, but that Americans can be both safe and free. And whereas the City of Asheville wishes to play a leading role in the protection of civil liberties and to consistently promote tolerance and respect for all persons, and recognizes that a number of our other jurisdictions in North Carolina and in the United States have enacted policies or laws to make clear the protection of the civil liberties of a diverse population. Therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Asheville that, section one, the City of Asheville opposes the constitutional rights and civil liberties of any and all persons, and it remains the policy of the City of Asheville to protect against discrimination on the basis of race, skin color, national or ethnic origin, gender, sexual orientation, mental or physical disability, immigration status, religious or political opinion or activity, or homed or homeless status. Section two, City of Asheville officers and employees reject profiling of any group within our diverse population as a factor in selecting individuals, setting up checkpoints or selecting areas of towns to subject to investigatory activities. Three, if officers stop a driver or motor vehicle who cannot produce a valid operator's license, and a computer check shows the driver has no license issuance information, the matter will be handled in accordance and approved Asheville Police Department policy. The City of Asheville employees do not and shall not collect, maintain, or disseminate information of any individual association, organization, corporation, business, or partnership based solely on political, religion, or social association or activities, unless said information is directly related to an investigation of criminal conduct. Section five, in the absence of state, interstate, or international criminal or national security investigation, the City of Asheville does not actively participate in the enforcement of federal immigration law. Be it further resolved that the provisions of this resolution are not intended to protect criminal activity on the part of any person, but are intended to encourage trust in the Asheville Police Department and to encourage reporting of criminal activity to the department by all members of the community. Be it further resolved that the provisions of this resolution are not intended to protect criminal activity of, of, on the part of any person, but are intended to encourage trust in the Asheville Police Department and to encourage reporting of criminal activity to that department by all members of the community. Two more. Be it further resolved that the provisions of this resolution shall be severable, and if any provision of this resolution is declared unconstitutional by a court or a competent jurisdiction, the validity of the remainder shall not be affected. Be it further resolved that this resolution, this resolution shall be afforded to all of the City of Asheville law enforcement agencies and to every department, agency, commission, officer, and employee of the City of Asheville, to our local, state, and federal legislative delegations on behalf of the residents of the City of Asheville. That's what it says.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Mayor, if I may also, I'd like to comment on former Officer Lanning's statement regarding what happened in the City of Fayetteville. What happened in the City of Fayetteville in 2012 was that the city council adopted a moratorium in response to issues or questions that blacks were being stopped more so than whites and searched. There is, the PBA there in Winston-Salem sued the city, sorry, in Fayetteville, sued the City of Fayetteville, and received an attorney general's opinion that, under state law, that officers could search with a consent search, and that therefore, the Attorney General's Office stated that the City of Fayetteville could not adopt a moratorium that would prevent an officer from conducting a consent search because state law allowed that. This resolution that you all are considering tonight is consistent with APD policy, and in no way does it violate any state law. In fact, it is consistent with the operation of the APD as it currently exists.
All right, counsel. We have a motion and a second. We've heard from the community. On in favor of approving this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, like sign. The motion carries unanimously. Please stop the applause, we've got a couple more things to go forward to tonight. We have item D, the resolution supporting clean energy economy. Maggie Allman will make the presentation.
Good evening again. I just want to provide a little bit of a process overview on the resolution you're looking at today, and then introduce the Chair of the Sustainability Committee and a representative from Duke Energy Progress to share a little bit more. And so, basically, the resolution for you today is a clean energy resolution proposing a partnership, a formal partnership, between the City of Asheville and Duke Energy Progress to actively work together to pursue the clean energy future that this council has called upon staff to work on, and that Duke Energy is also pursuing in several of their programs. Historically, we've always worked very closely with the power company, and this proposal to have a formal partnership would really solidify that and encourage us to find deeper parts of our relationship moving forward. How it got to you today is that there's great leadership in the community from the Sierra Club Beyond Coal Campaign and the Western North Carolina Alliance to bring the concept to the Sustainability Advisory Committee on Energy and the Environment. And so, those community groups came to that Sustainability Committee back in August, and the committee had a lot of discussion about it and was in full support. However, during that conversation, no one from the, from Progress or from Duke Energy Progress was there, so if we're going to have a partnership with Duke, we needed to discuss it with them. So, after August, the STC Committee pulled together folks from Duke Energy Progress, pulled together folks from the WNC Alliance and from Sierra Club, and staff as well, and we all looked at the language of the resolution and really got it to a point where it felt as though both partners would be supported in their clean energy future. After that point, the resolution went back to the STC Committee just last week, and STC unanimously voted eight to zero to bring it forth for y'all for consideration of formalizing in a resolution tonight. With that, I'm going to introduce Duncan McPherson, the Chair of the Sustainability Advisory Committee. He's going to share some thoughts. After that, Jason Walls from Duke Energy will share, and if you had any questions of staff, you know where to find me if you need. Duncan? Jason? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am Duncan McPherson, Chair of the Sustainable Advisory Committee on Energy and the Environment. Before I review the goals and intentions of this resolution very briefly, I do want to thank two people who are very instrumental in working and collaborating with our committee on that, and that is Julie Mayfield of the WNC Alliance and Kelly Martin of the Sierra Club. They really provide a great leadership in working with us on this task. So, there are two primary goals to this resolution. First, to establish a long-term plan and vision for a community source of electricity, and a plan and vision that addresses climate change and clean air and clean water, the two most critical environmental issues in our region. The second, and equally as important, is to create a partnership with our electricity provider and work together to begin to transition from coal to clean energy. So, establishing this policy is really only the, the beginning of what's going to be a long and complicated process. However, this resolution can serve as a catalyst to help move the economy and our environment to a clean energy future. Clean energy jobs are growing faster than the rest of the economy right now, and policies like this can really be a spark to help continue to promote clean energy jobs right here in our community. So, I believe we, we all understand why this is an important issue, and the real question becomes, how do we get to this long-term goal? And we're, we're currently hitched directly tied to our coal-bearing power plant, there's, there's just a reality to that, and there's significant technical realities of how we're going to make this transition from coal to clean energy. So, in order to achieve this goal, we need to align our common interests of clean air and clean water, and work in a true collaborative partnership with all of the stakeholders involved. Because the reality is, forward-thinking policies such as this one, hard work from nonprofits on the local and national level, are only going to take us so far. We need to engage our electricity providers, we need to bring them to the table, and we need to bring them along in this process for it to really reach our ultimate goal. So, Duke Energy needs to be and will be a part of this solution. This resolution really begins to build this partnership, help align the goals and values of our community with our electricity provider, and their participation is really a, a critical part of this resolution's eventual success. So, with that, I'd like to invite Jason Walls, the District Manager for Duke Energy Progress, to come up and say a few words as well.
City Council, I was going to say Mayor Bellby, she's not there. Good evening, and, and thank you for your, your patience in, in sitting through this, and I'll be brief. You know, the company as a company, we, we view this resolution, this resolution as a positive step in really creating a partnership with the city around energy-related issues to help the city reduce its state of goal, reducing its, its carbon footprint. You know, however, you know, when we think about the Asheville Coal Plant, the plant that has been providing electricity to this region for, for five decades, you know, it's an important part of how we've been able to provide electricity going forward. You know, so, to that, you know, to that point, if the council sees this resolution, as some have promoted this, as the start to shut down the Asheville Coal Plant, the company simply can't support that. We can, however, support what we believe the intent of this resolution is. You know, it's, it's the company's obligation alone to keep the lights on 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and we have a state-mandated responsibility to provide reliable electricity at the lowest possible cost. To that degree, the use of coal across North Carolina has decreased dramatically, and continues to decrease dramatically. By the end of this year, our company alone will have retired seven of the 14 coal plants currently or in recent years have operated within this state. While we are reducing coal where we can in the Carolinas, we can't close a plant without a practical way to replace the electricity that our residents and our businesses depend on. You know, when we think about creating a sustainable energy future, we see it as, you can't overly rely on any one technology, but you have to find that sweet spot to strike the balance between electricity that is provided that's reliable, affordable, and increasingly clean each and every day, and that's our legal obligation, and that's our commitment to our customers. Duke Energy clearly supports solar energy and recognizes the vital role it plays in our energy future. Simply put, our customers have told us, we want more renewable choices, and we are committed to working with customers to make that a reality. But we can't do it alone. It's going to take the leadership and the help from organizations like the Asheville City Council to make that a reality. However, today's rules that we operate within in North Carolina don't support, or don't adequately address the increase of solar. Those rules were designed when solar was a very, very small component of our community, and the costs were really high, and those have switched today. And so, we have to get the rules right here in North Carolina, and we look forward to working with the city and other leaders on that endeavor. As a company, much like the City of Asheville, you know, getting to know Maggie, that you all aren't sitting still, and neither are we. You know, we are researching, we're studying, we're looking at evolving technologies to determine when and if those become utility-scale projects. We want to be well-positioned to take advantage of those for our customers. I'm wrapped. The best part is, hey, we want to be, we want to be a part of this journey with you. And that was, that was the end.
Okay. And if you want to hand the written statements to our city clerk, she'll finish them and send them off to us before we start finishing reading them. Any other members of the community wishing to address counsel on this particular issue? Yes, ma'am? And if you could just state your name for the record.
My name is Ashley Brown. I am a born and raised resident of Asheville, North Carolina. I have a bachelor's degree in environmental studies, and have just recently returned from California back to Asheville in order to increase our sustainable progress. And I say progress in the sense that I hope that our decision-making would reflect that. And Jason Wells, coming from Duke Energy, I know he is coming from a business standpoint, and that's how we need to look at as well. So, why are we immediately partnering with Duke? Why can we not do it as a city, as ourselves, what I ask? And so, I propose, or ask, that we ask other people what they would prefer, instead of just going to that one company that has been charging our energy rates, and as low as they can be, I'm not so sure. And for three aspects, he says, needs, needs of customers, delivering reliable, affordable, increasingly clean electricity, when coal is the least clean energy, I believe. And so, I ask people to research and look into this, rather than just partner with Duke, and accept that they are saving us, rather than look at what they are doing to us. Our national, our, our, excuse me, our air quality in Asheville is 8.1... Our national, our, excuse me, our air quality in Asheville is 8.1% higher than the national average. People used to come to this place in order to become healthy and breathe our clean air and I'm asking us to go back in that direction. Can you just think about that?
All right. Yes, ma'am. If you could just state your name for the record.
Sure. Hi, I'm Kelly Martin and I am representing the Asheville Beyond Coal Campaign. So, I'd ask for a few extra minutes. I have folks that are willing to cede their time.
I need three people to raise your hand who have not already spoken but who are giving up their time to not speak. All right, you've given up your time. Got it?
Thanks. So, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for considering this important resolution after what has already been a really long evening. So, the Asheville Beyond Coal Coalition is a local organization that has engaged thousands of local residents who want to see Asheville transition beyond coal, many of which are in the room tonight. So, I'd like to invite people that are here tonight in support of the Clean Energy Resolution to stand up. Thank you all very much for not only supporting--
Kelly, you want to speak to us?
Thank you for supporting this resolution and for staying with you guys. Thank you guys for being here for three and a half hours already. Appreciate the leadership. Okay, so, the leadership of the city has already made it a priority to slash its emissions of carbon pollution and reduce its carbon footprint, and for that, we thank you. We thank you for your leadership and we thank you for protecting and celebrating the things that make Asheville a special place, our clean air, our clean water, and our beautiful mountains. And this resolution tonight takes a further step towards addressing climate change. Asheville is home to the biggest source of carbon pollution in Western North Carolina, which is Duke Energy's Asheville Coal Plant. Now, having a coal plant that's the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in the region isn't unique to Asheville. Burning coal for electricity is the number-one source. It's the single-largest source of climate pollution in this country and around the world. And so, once we put carbon up into the atmosphere, it's there for 100 years. It's kind of like blowing up a mountain. It's taking a wrecking ball to our climate and once we have the carbon there, it's virtually impossible to put the pieces back together again. Climate disruption is no longer something that's happening in our future. Climate change is happening now to our families. It's landed on millions of doorsteps across America in the form of droughts and wildfires and flooding and superstorms like Superstorm Sandy that we saw last year. The International Panel of Climate Scientists just released its latest findings and they show unfortunately that the situation is more grim and happening more quickly than we even expected, and our window for making meaningful action, taking meaningful action, is closing. So, that's why there's a nationwide movement, people just like us, just like you all, all across America, who are moving their towns and cities and states off of coal and towards a clean energy future. Since 2010, utilities have announced that over, or that exactly, 150 coal plants and counting will retire in just the next handful of years. Now, there's about 500 coal plants in the country, so retiring 150 of them is really, really significant. The cost of burning coal is going up, the cost of clean energy is plummeting, and the EPA has just released its first-ever standards to regulate the amount of carbon that we're allowed to put into the atmosphere. So, by burning less coal, we open up market space for clean energy solutions like solar energy and energy efficiency. We create jobs, we create healthier communities, and at the same time, we just might have a shot at averting the worst impacts of climate disruption. So, this resolution here tonight, in and of itself, as Jason said, won't retire the Asheville Coal Plant. And I don't mean in any way to represent that it will, but what it will do is recommit the city on its carbon footprint reductions. It will, it acknowledges that without Duke's partnership and without a transition away from burning fossil fuels for electricity, we won't be able to meet our carbon reduction goals. So, it sets in motion a partnership that can facilitate a transition away from burning fossil fuels and onto clean energy. And so, y'all know that this has been through many iterations, this resolution has, and I really appreciate the leadership from members of council and from SACE and from the staff and the willingness of Duke Energy and specifically Jason to engage in the policymaking that has gotten us to this final version that you have here in front of you. And so, while it may seem like a small step that y'all are taking tonight, I would offer that the action you will take is a significant one. Tonight, should you choose to pass this Clean Energy Resolution, and I hope that you will, Asheville will join the ranks of Austin, Texas, and Los Angeles, California, and Madison, Wisconsin, Alexandria, Virginia, and Boulder, Colorado, and many, many more communities across the country that are saying that a clean energy future is not only possible, but it's good for our economy and it's good for the environment. So, I, once my kids are adults, it'll be too late to stop climate disruption. We're the last generation of people that can stop climate change. And so, when I think about my son and my two daughters and all the kids that I love, I want to be able to tell them that we did it, that we took bold action and we used bold leadership to avert the crisis of climate change. So, we have an incredible movement right here in Asheville and across the country. We have a moment in time and we have an opportunity, and it's time for Asheville to join the towns and cities and states across America that are transitioning to a clean energy economy. So, in closing, I hope that you will vote in favor of the Clean Energy Resolution tonight and I hope that you'll do all that you can to take bold action on climate change to protect our air, our water, and our future. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak who didn't give up their time? Two more people.
Good evening. My name is Julie Mayfield. I'm co-director at the Western North Carolina Alliance, and I just want to say thanks to you all, as everyone else has, for considering this and thanks to Maggie and Duncan and the members of SACE and particularly to Jason for working with us. I think Jason has not yet finished with his statement and I would love for there to be an opportunity for him to come back up and do that. I don't think any of us thought he was going to get buzzed out, so I'll leave that to y'all, but I think there's more that you would like to hear. So, this represents, I think, an important step for y'all in terms of achievement of your carbon goals. I think it also represents an important partnership in finding that practical way toward a clean energy future for this region that Jason referenced. We don't know what that path is yet, but our hope is that this is a first step in getting on the road to figuring out what that path is. So, we need to do that, we can do that. Third, I think this is a step in making this region a healthier and more environmentally sound place in the future. Y'all may not know this, but in addition to being the largest carbon source in this region, this plant is also one of the largest in terms of air and water pollution, and that's just to be expected with such a large industrial facility. So, reducing our use of coal in this region will have benefits far beyond just reducing carbon. Now, I want to diverge a little bit and give you a little bit of an update on the litigation. You all were kind enough and thank you very much for submitting a comment letter on the consent, the draft consent order in the litigation, the state's litigation against Duke Energy on the coal ash ponds. Quick update on that. The first good news, you may know this, but just to wrap it up in a nice, neat little bow, the Alliance and the Sierra Club and the Waterkeeper Alliance were allowed to intervene into that, into that case in August, so we're now full parties in that case. The state also, in addition to your comment, received almost 5,000 others, all opposing, all but one opposing the consent decree, so that was good news. And then, to cap off what was a pretty unfortunate 10 days to two weeks for our friend Jason and Duke, the state ended up suing Duke over coal ash pollution at all 15 of their plants in the state. So, that's, that's where that is. Friday, a week ago, Duke and the state submitted a revised consent order to the judge for his consideration. That consent order is better. It responded to some of the public comments, some of EPA's comments, some of our comments, yours. It does not, however, in our mind, meet the fundamental requirement of stopping the ongoing pollution from the coal ash pond, and until that is addressed, we won't be able to support it. So, we think it's still legally insufficient and that the law requires more. The next steps on that are, the judge will be ordering some discovery, probably limited discovery, that we will be participating in, and in the next weeks or months, we'll hold a hearing on that, and I'm done, a hold a hearing on the consent order before making it final. Thanks for having me.
Yes, ma'am. You stood up? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Kathy Scott. Thank you for having this opportunity. I'm a member of a group called Transition Asheville, and that movement is one that, it's an international movement that encourages communities like Asheville to creatively and resiliently address the challenges that are posed by fossil fuel addiction, changes in weather and climate, and also the unsettled national and global economic situation. So, as a member of that group, Transition Asheville, I'm thrilled to have the city council consider adopting the Clean Energy Resolution. Transition folks like to say that if necessary change only happens on the individual level, it will be too little. If change only happens on the governmental level, it will be too late. If it happens on the community level, it may be exactly what needs to happen and it may be just in time. So, by adopting this resolution, it looks like you, as city council, are signaling that you do know what needs to happen and that you're well-aware that this is the time. What Transition Asheville feels is needed and what this resolution would move forward is ways to provide the city and the region with energy whose generation does not poison the air and the water. Also, we need to require those who are deeply invested in energy generation in this area, that is Duke, to engage with this community to solve those problems. And we need to recognize and support other ways for all of us who are interested to generate and control our own energy needs and usage. So, I say bravo to all those goals that you will be meeting, Transition, goals that you will be meeting if you do adopt this resolution, and I hope you will. Thank you.
If you could just state your name for the record.
Kim Braim, and I'm speaking on behalf of the thousands of local Sierra Club members and supporters to let you know how strongly that our members feel and our supporters feel about how, what a historic opportunity this is for our city council to partner with Duke, and I really appreciate Duke stepping up and being part of this partnership to look and find a path forward to transition away from coal to clean energy. Asheville's known for a lot of things, B-City USA, Beer City USA. I'm ready for Asheville to be known as Solar City USA, and I think this is a good step in that direction. Thank you.
Is it that? Yes, ma'am. And if you could come for it and state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Patty Beaver and I'm representing the Council of Independent Business Owners, and we urge the Asheville City Council to remember that the business community must have reliable and affordable electricity. We believe that it is the responsibility of the Asheville City Council to make policy that ensures that reliable and affordable electricity is available in order that businesses can exist, thrive, and grow in the City of Asheville.
Yeah, thank you. Original. Anyone else? All right, was there a motion put on the floor?
I would offer that maybe Jason be permitted to finish his remarks. That would be, that would be helpful to me, anyway.
I agree.
Yeah, maybe--
And I will make it quick. New city, new rules, and I apologize, I should have been a little bit smarter. I mean, just in closing, you know, we see this resolution, we really do see it as an important next step in that partnership and continuing the conversation between the company and the city on ways to reduce your carbon footprint. It's not going to be an easy journey, but I think the conversation, I think the partnership is important and we're supportive of it. You know, and we're grateful for the leadership that has spoken tonight and rolling up the sleeves and really going to work on this resolution. Success will only happen if we work together. You know, we view efforts like expanding LEDs across the city to, you know, technical support for Solarize Asheville, for, you know, those things that we need to be better engaged in as a company, as opportunities to really partner together with the city to help you go where you want to be. We're grateful for the diligent work of the SACE Committee and your Chief Sustainability Officer Maggie Ullman on this resolution. But more importantly, we are excited and we're supportive to be a part of this journey with you and we look forward to finding and executing wins throughout the region and throughout the city. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Okay. Yes?
I was going to move approval of the resolution.
That's fine.
But as I do that, I want to, I want to just reinforce what's been said about the collaborative approach that's occurred. I've been tuned into this for three or four months now as it's sort of arisen and evolved, and it seemed to me at first that it might not include Duke and Progress Duke in support of this. And I met with Mr. Walls myself maybe six weeks ago and there really is a spirit of collaboration and dialogue represented by his leadership, and I think he speaks for the company. I don't think he'd be here tonight if he didn't have the backing of the company. So, I just want to express appreciation for that, I really do. Am I on a short leash now?
Councilman Bothwell?
Yeah, I'll second that, and I'd like to make a comment in regard to a number of the issues that were raised here. In regard to the, one of the latest comments there that business needs reliable energy, absolutely, and that's why companies like the Biltmore Company, AB Emblem up in Weaverville, New Belgium Brewing, Sierra Nevada, are making solar part of their business plan. It's a smart way to move forward. It's not, it's not some, something flaky anymore. It's something very real and tangible. I can say from, from my personal experience that this partnership with Duke is extremely important. I lived off the grid on solar power. I was an early adopter for 22 years, starting in 1979, and battery systems have inherent weaknesses and problems, and I lived on a very frugal system, but I recognized in doing that that it is not what the people of America will adopt. They are not going to cut back their energy use the way I did anytime soon, and if we all use those kind of batteries, we'd have a toxic mess. Using the grid to balance out production is extremely important. Now, I have solar panels on my house and they're connected to the grid, so I pump solar into the grid during the daytime and take power back out of the grid at night. We're never going to be able to be totally solar because we're going to have, somehow we're going to need to have a storage situation. Now, maybe flywheels will do it. They're doing great work at North Carolina State on new storage facilities instead of batteries. Other things that are happening too right now that are really exciting and are going to move Duke, I think, and other power companies toward being the transmission companies, much more than just the power-producing companies. Just last week, NC State Solar Center announced a breakthrough that is, I think is something on the order of 10 times improvement in the efficiency of solar panels. About a month ago, a group in Holland at the university there announced development of new wind generators that are motionless. There's no more rotors involved. It uses chemical exchanges from the wind crossing over membranes. So, a lot of the objections to wind are going to go away and they're going to be able to, things are going to change very, very fast, and I think that Duke will, will see that. Of course, Duke has had the plan, as Jason said. They have to, they're mandated to have the power we need when we need it. I mean, they can't get away from that. They, they make a lot of money doing it, yes, but they're also there when we need that, and so, we need to partner with them. I don't think there's any way around that, not any realistic way. But the part we can play is adopting things like Solarize Asheville, you know, getting as much solar installed here as we can, using other systems when they're available, cutting our energy use as much as possible, learning more efficient things, putting LED lights in your home like the city's doing in our streetlights. Every way we do that we cut our use, turn off your lights when you're not, turn off your TV when you're not watching it. You know, there's, it's, some of the things are so simple, they're stupid, but do it and, and we can cut the need for the coal power at the same time that we're bringing on these alternatives. So, I applaud this. I think it's really cool that we ended up working together. I think we're going to move forward really happily with this and lead the nation in some ways in doing this.
Councilman Hunt?
First of all, the resolution, the five points I will read that are not the, as is read, "The city of Asheville supports a local clean energy future for the city and the region. The city of Asheville calls on Duke Energy to partner with the city to help meet its carbon reduction goals by decreasing its reliance on fossil fuels, including transitioning from coal to electricity provided by clean renewable energy sources while continuing to meet the company's obligation to provide affordable and reliable electricity to all customers 24 hours a day, seven days a week." "The city of Asheville further calls on Duke Energy progress to continue to expand its investments in and program supporting renewable energy, energy efficiency, and energy conservation. The city of Asheville further calls on Duke Energy progress to stop the spread of new coal ash pollution and remediate existing coal ash pollution. Lastly, the city of Asheville develops a clean energy partnership progress report to be delivered in one year to the city council that documents the achievements of this partnership with Duke Energy progress." I'm asking for a number six. This really speaks to just Duke and the city. And you talked about collaboration. Well, we have a strong environmentally sustainable group of people who've worked on this issue from, looking at it from an environmental perspective and business perspective, but come from the background of supporting the Alliance and a lot of Sierra Club. But I think see those missing from the table or other business people are missing from the table. The success of the Clean, this Clean Smoke Stacks Act that was passed years ago under Marilyn Sidnik is, she was working with the governor's office, community members, the Alliance at the time with Councilman, or Barney Newman was the Alliance director. But it included more community and stakeholders. So, I would ask that the council, under the vice mayor, look at a committee that's going to look at this so that a year from now, we do have some progress to make for it. And even if it's SASE or whatever, but we have a process that it's not just city staff, that it is a collaboration of community members that, who are at the table talking about future needs, what that looks like. Duke used to have a committee that they would convene on a regular basis, talking about these issues and what needs to be addressed and how it was addressed. And it had buy-in, it was held at the Chamber of Commerce. And so, it had buy-in at the, at the business level, the environmental level, because all parties were at the table at the same time. And so, I, I feel like that's missing as we pass this resolution. And I think it's a key component going forward.
And Mayor, just to make sure I understand, you would suggest an item six that would lead to the city creating a focus group or a task force.
And it's a date to be determined, I mean...
It would be, it kind of originated at the council level, so...
It starts here or the next council, I don't care. But it starts to look at making sure all our communities represented at the table as we talk about this, because this issue of looking at how Duke does its business, it won't just impact the environmentalist community. It's going to impact every part of our community. And so, if everybody's at the table going forward, you have more immediate buy-in as opposed to pushback whenever council comes up with a proposal.
Well, I, I think I'm agreeable to that, Mayor. I'd like to look to Jason and Tracy, you know, the...
I'm wondering if SASE could, I wonder if SASE would appropriately be able to think about that.
The most balanced, I mean, but is it...
But with the direction provided.
I think, I think an item that says we will, the council wants to consider with the support of SASE and the advice of our partners, the creation of this initiative without defining exactly what it looks like. So, I'm, I agree to that modification to the...
Or maybe direction to SASE.
Yeah. With SASE's leadership in helping us.
All right. But as long as it's a collaboration and it's a balanced conversation, that way you win some, some partners as you go forward on this initiative.
Does that, just again, nods from supporters. Okay, I'm seeing nods.
So, the maker of the motion, second of the motion, are you okay with that?
So, just to be clear, you're including therefore in this motion, the idea that we, that more people are included in the conversation going forward? Are you putting off approval of this?
No, no, it's number six. It's going, if the votes are there, it goes for it tonight. It's just a number six so that we know that when number five comes back a year from now, that council will have a collaborate, a product that's the byproduct of months of meeting, talking, analysis, looking at the analysis of numbers and needs.
Right. Okay, I agree with that.
Okay. Thank you. So, we have an amended resolution. Any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. The motion carries unanimously. All right. I'm going to turn it over to the vice mayor for this last little piece of boards and commissions work.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. We've got a few boards and commissions to get through. Looking at your agenda, and I can do this quickly, I know it's late. The Citizens Police Advisory Committee, we recommend re-advertising. It's actually already being re-advertised because there were no applicants from central. So, okay?
Agreed.
So, on these, just object, otherwise I'm assuming you agree. Firemen's Relief Fund, we, the boards and commissions is recommending the reappointment of Lisa Gibbs. And she is currently serving, there were no other applicants, so we recommend reappointment. Also, she has 100% attendance. And even Mike Lanning is nodding to that one, I think so. Oh, no. I thought you were, I thought you were agreeing. Okay. Is that all right? Do I have a motion to reappoint Lisa Gibbs?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. For Historic Resource Commission, the commission weighed in and recommended Stephen Smith Farrell or Richard Fast for the vacancy. And the recommendation from boards and commissions is to rec, is to interview both of them and pick between, between them.
You want nods or motion?
Nodding. Gordon and Chris, nod your head.
Nod. What are we nodding about?
Say yes.
Say yes. Okay.
Oh, yes.
Okay. On the Homeless Initiative Advisory Committee, the committee itself recommends the reappointment of David Nash, Scott Rogers, and Hilliard, is it Carlisle? The boards and commissions agreed with the reappointment of the three.
Agreed.
If that is agreeable, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The Recreation Board, the board asked that this, this be re-advertized because they only got one applicant and, and it actually is already being re-advertized. If you're in agreement with continuing that re-advertising process, nodding your head, that is okay. Okay. Riverfront Redevelopment Commission, the commission recommends the reappointment of Patty Torno, as does boards and commissions. If that is agreeable, I will entertain a motion reappointing Patty Torno.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? No. Soil Erosion Stormwater Review Committee, both Pete Hildebrand and Ter McSpinner are interested in reappointment. Boards and commissions recommends their reappointment. This is where you come in with a motion if you're in agreement.
So moved.
We have two seats open?
Yes. Yes.
Second.
You're seconding then, maybe. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. And the Tourism Development Authority, the authority asks that Jim Muth be appointed. Boards and commissions is recommending Jim Muth's appointment to the TDA.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All opposed.
All right, that's it.
All right. And Council, this is a time for informal discussion and public comment. And I do have a recommend, a request to speak by Lisa Landis. On anything that's not on our printed agenda that we covered already this evening. And if you come forward and state your name.
I am Reverend Lisa Landis. And I didn't say good job earlier, but I wanted to let you know that I'm still behind you, even though I might put a fire under you sometime. I wanted to let you know that. I had wanted to speak about, about corruption. And a lot of times, we have to look at why there is corruption. And what I have found is that whenever you have natural, natural is only criminal when it's perverted for profit. So, when you start to look at the different things, I'm going to talk about, about, you know, drugs and alcoholism. And I was looking over here and seeing how much it has grown since, since I have been here. And we have these prisons that keep growing and growing. And where's the profit in it? And why are they in prison? Okay, we're going to go back to drugs and alcohol. Whenever we are building a, a solution, it's like, well, you know, you, you need to address the problem. The problem is the disease and decay in society. And until you look at how to fix that, that disease, it's going to continue to grow. So, why do we keep building prisons when we should be addressing the solution as to treatment of people? There are too many people who would like to get sober and there aren't enough treatment facilities. So, when we're looking at it, are we profiting on the disease and decay in society? You know, who is profiting? Who is selling these drugs? Who is, you know, with the alcohol, the spirits? You know, they say that the, the disease of alcoholism is a spiritual malady. Well, you have someone who drinks enough of alcohol. Alcohol is spirit. Look at the definition in the dictionary of what spirit is. You know, what spirit do you put in you? So, I'm looking forward to the next election and people who are serious about listening to, to people who come up and speak. And that's going to be another thing. When you have your public comment at the end, you are prohibiting some people from coming. And a lot of them in the homeless shelters because they have to be in at a certain time. So, if you are putting in one resolution, then you have to look at what another resolution is. So, I'm back. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
She said that.
All right, Council. Anything else? Me withdraw.